City. I think it's like one. And then when we're done there, we'll go up to Spearfish to my daughters. My daughter's having a Thanksgiving open house. All of they've they've just moved into this house in, you know, the last whatever. Four months. Uh huh. And all their friends are giving them a trip because they haven't had an open house yet. Nobody's seen the house. But they're re totally remodeling it and so they decided they couldn't wait until they were totally done. So they're just inviting everybody up there for Thanksgiving to open house, so. How old is your daughter? Thirty.
Alrighty, it's now six o'clock. Let's begin our most of town board meeting. On Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Roll call Kramer.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Coontz here, service.
Here.
Like to thank everybody else for showing up. I have a little bit smaller crowd tonight from past meetings, but that's that's okay too. So please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Right, thank you. Okay, review of current agenda items. Let's see, so we do have some amounts to update on Engineer B. I don't know that there's any other changes we need to make. Does anybody have any? So I'll move that the engineer amounts or the amounts on Engineer V should be, so water distribution model is thirty-one seventy-five as it states. North Water Tank is thirty-six four hundred. EWS RF project is one sixty-two eight forty. Waste Water Treatment Plant is eighty-two sixty. Lone Coyote Sewer Extension is ninety-seven forty. Tiff two is sixty-five sixty and C-Mom update is thirty-four hundred. And I believe there those amounts are reflected in the packet. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. So I guess I'll move to accept the agenda with those changes.
One second.
Okay, Linda seconds, any discussion on that? No, okay, so I did wanna also bring up to people's attention. So last time there was a question on considering items on the agenda with without posting them in advance and things. And so I'm reading this from the conducting the public's business in public open meeting laws guide. And there are some copies on that back table back there. And we do have it posted on our website too for people to read. And so I'm just gonna read from page four here real quick. So there's a question, may agenda items be considered if they are added less than twenty-four hours before a meeting? And so I don't believe there's any items on this agenda that have been added less than twenty-four hours. And I know at one time there was a town policy that we wouldn't consider items for vote unless they'd been on the agenda, I think since Friday, the Friday before, so. But this is what the Open Meeting Laws Guide says, put out by, I believe it's the S D M L if I'm not mistaken. So the answer to that question, may agenda items be considered if they are added less than twenty-four hours before a meeting? It goes through some information here, but I think the key point for us is and and leads to answer to a form a former question. At the time the final agenda is adopted, the governing body may add or delete agenda items and may also change the order of business. So that's what we're proposing here with this agenda item right now. And then it continues on later, new items cannot be added after the agenda has been adopted by the governing body. So after we adopt the agenda at the meeting, new items can't be added, which we know. And it goes on, public bodies are strongly encouraged to provide at least twenty-four hours notice of all agenda items so as to be fair to the public to avoid dispute. And then later on, it goes posting less than twenty-four hours in advance may be permissible in in emergencies. So I I'm just bringing this up because there's some question before on on, you know, what are the recommended practices for that and how can we make sure we don't run afoul of open meeting laws? And so and I appreciate all the information in that vein. But if we read from this thing here, as long as we are within twenty within twenty-four hours, we're good. In emergencies, we can we can do things less than twenty-four hours. And then I'd also like to reiterate too that I don't believe there's any items on this current agenda that are less than twenty-four hours, other than the amounts that we had to just change. So anyways, with that, is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? I motion carries. Okay, approval of November fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes and November twelfth, twenty twenty special meeting minutes. I did just have one change to the minutes in the packet and I was on the consent calendar for Tuesday, November fourth. And it should read the motion by Kramer and seconded by Ferguson and those names are transposed in the current minutes, so. Other than that, I didn't see anything. Does anybody have any, anybody else have any changes they'd like to make or anything like that? Okay, so I I'll move to approve the minutes with those changes.
Second down.
Uh, seconds, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I motion carries. A conflict of interest declaration, same thing that we do every meeting. You have a conflict of interest on any items on the agenda, please declare it either now or during the Okay, on to town and FEMA updates. So we're on approve FEMA grant administration change.
Yes, sir. Real quick, Mr. Chair, did that motion include the special meeting minutes and the all?
I believe so. Yeah, I believe I didn't mention those as well. Yeah, okay. Okay, so now on to town FEMA updates, approved FEMA grant administration change. So, you know, obviously we had some changes with our engineering situation and Anthony's no longer working for Benish and he's starting ATAC, his own engineering firm. Anthony Theodoro and company, I believe is what the acronym stands for. I do like the acronym though, so very good on that. So this item is to decide how we want to proceed with the FEMA grant. And so I do have some inputs from some of the various parties, if you all would like to hear them during the discussion. And I see Joan back there too, and I hope she weighs in during the discussion. Sure she'll have some important things to say. So would anyone like to make the motion to do this?
I'll make the motion to approve Anthony's company for the FEMA grant.
Okay, so before before we ask for a second on that, I did want to mention too, I did receive word from the state through Bridget that if we do move away from Benish on the administration of this grant, that we will be required to rebid. And so I I have not yet talked to the state directly on that, that, you know, and I don't doubt that that's what happened. But I would like to discuss that with the state first before before we do that, but.
If we're totally making the motion?
Yeah, well, so I think at this point, if we wanted wanted to change from Benish, that we would have to go out to bid, and I believe it's the request for qualifications on that. So I think it this time, that's what we'd have to do if we wanted to move away from Benish. Would you like to make that motion to move that we?
I think we have to. Don't we? I mean, I think that maybe you should tell us the information that you know first from Bridget and the state. And that kind of lines up then, I think, with the motion I'm making. As I see it.
Sure, well, you like to make the motion and then we can have the discussion underneath the motion too. So Linda moves to change the FEMA grant administration via a R F Q. Does that capture your intent? So do we have a second on that one?
I'll send it out for discussion.
Aaron, seconds. Okay, so I guess right now, Joan, did you have comments you wanted to make?
Could we just have the motion before the discussion?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And did you have a something to add to the discussion? I know the FEMA is on your wheelhouse here.
Without any local representation, we can't hardly continue this grant. We need someone that can be on site that can be at a meeting and we need them to be someone that knows what the grant is all about. Benish is no longer here. They have offered no one to stand in and do those things locally. I think we have no choice but to move on. However, I don't know how they expect us to rebid when we are I would guess, you know, somewhat into the grant. Maybe we're only fifteen or twenty percent into it, but we are into it. So we have for anyone to bid on it would have to be rewritten. Which is a lot of work. I mean, I'm sure that, you know, it can be done and we can pay Anthony to do that or whatever, but I'm just surprised that they asked for it to rebid since he was appointed as an engineer and Neil was appointed. None of that is changing. We're only changing the name we like to check. But I think we have to.
Okay, thanks, Joan. Aaron, did you have a something?
Yeah, I think that I think that breeze through Scott. Very, very good. I think we're a little bit in the water. The differentiation between a bid and an R F Q. So essentially, R F Q, as we say, this is what professional qualifications are needed in order to do this work. Not necessarily what cost you're going to charge us to do it, but basically, are you capable of fulfilling all the all the needs and responsibilities related to this work? So it's more of a resume look over than an actual bid for contractor, right? So basically, we're just gonna say, all right, who thinks are qualified to do this that's interested in doing it is basically what an R F Q is, right?
Yeah, we'll take Joan's comment and then Anthony, if you could, I guess, confirm.
I can't see that it's only qualifications. This is who we're talking about and we need to know not just are they qualified to do it, but how are they going to charge to do it? How are they going to do it? Is that gonna meet the standards that we're expecting right now? Things like that. I mean, it can't just come down to, oh, yeah, we need to hear them qualified. That just won't do it.
So then, in your opinion, the motion should be instead of R F Q and R F P, a request for proposal?
Well, the motion should be whatever the state is going to require.
Right, okay. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add, I I wrote that opinion about basically whether we had to rebid all of the services. I wasn't really thinking. Side of this, I'm supposing this is terms that are intrinsic to that grant or they probably have not seen. And so if they're having those requirements put onto us, we just want to make sure that our request for bids matches whatever those requirements are in the grant itself. For this, we keep in mind.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So is there any other discussion, Dan?
And I think what Joan said is exactly right, that you can't put it out there, or you're gonna take the possibility of canceling the whole grant and releasing that money back to the state. You know, if they won't accept Anthony and Neil to do the project, then that's what's gonna happen. And that's what you stated in qualifications of engineering, you know, any over a hundred thousand dollars. That you require bids that go out into that aspect of it, you know, it's it needs to be tied to this project, because this is exactly what Joan said. With Anthony being involved in this project with Neil, you don't keep that base with them people and they allow them players to be involved in this grant. They're gonna turn that whole thing back.
Joan.
Another point to remember is that the contract does say within the grant that any expenditures over that bottom line they gave us, the town will pay. Any bills that come in of someone else, should you have to hire someone else down in line with what we have already got, which actually we would have liked to be a little less. We have money left for administration here, but regardless, the town would be paying up. The ordinance changed the amount just because you rebid it.
Where you thought.
I mean, they'll 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 pay less if you send in less lifts. If you don't pay more.
Okay. So I guess just for completeness, so I did receive an email from Jeff Sokol, who is the Benish Division Manager out of Nebraska. And says also Senior Vice President and Linda and I met with him last Friday and he was in town. And so I'm not gonna read the whole email, but it says, I wanted to reiterate again that we are in a position with a full project team and skills available to complete brick project and any other projects, which those are coming up later. And then also specific to the brick grant, as that is subject to additional elements compared to other work. If it is ultimately decided to make a change, we encourage the board to get clear direction from state and federal representatives on what steps need to be followed for selecting a different firm to avoid risking any of the work being deemed unallowable for reimbursement under the grant award. So I think Joan might have been alluding to that a little bit too. Let's see here. I did receive an email from Bridget Mitchell and she recommended that we do not make a decision at this time on this particular item. Just because some of the reasons she listed. So she said she talked to Benish and Benish would like to continue with the brick project. She said no other firms bid it private previously because we had been, we had secured Benish as our engineering firm. So they figured that they didn't have an opportunity or they would not be considered. Let's see. She says that only two of ten people in the proposal are no longer with the firm. I don't know if that is is accurate. We can get comments later. And then she recommends that we do not vote on terminating the contract with Benish tonight. She did say that she spoke to Jim Hoppin at the South Dakota office and and Jim said that the town will need to go out to bid again if we terminate the contract to comply with FEMA contract requirements. And so I I personally haven't talked to Jim yet, but that's what Bridget relayed on that topic. So, I mean, there's seems like there's a few things going on here. Does anybody else on the board have any questions or anything like that? Anthony, do you have any points to clarify or anything that maybe we got wrong or?
But the federal, it's a federal program. And so it follows federal laws and so the law that governs selection of a professional firm is Brooks Act. Brooks Act is a qualification based selection. And most times you select the qualified firm based on their staff that they have to offer to the project and if they got the capabilities to complete the scope. And then then you look at price. So obviously, there's some money that's been expended up to this point, not a lot, honestly. You know, there's probably still over four hundred thousand of that grant left. So that would be something you would negotiate with firms that provide their qualifications if you put out an R F Q. And then, but after you've selected based on the qualifications, then you start discussing with them. Can you finish it for this budget? Because it's the budget we have. You can allude to it and maybe the R F P, but more or less that's a viewpoint, because you're picking them based on their abilities.
Okay, Mark.
Maybe I'm a little confused by this. Is Benish saying they want to continue doing this?
Yes, sir, yep.
So. So if they're willing to continue and if we we would literally basically be firing them? Is that, I mean, if we went with somebody else?
Well, I mean, so well, I guess in a sense you could say that, but really the decision on the table is to put this back out to R F Q, which would be stopping our current contract with them on this particular item, you know, which we're considering right now. There's other items on the agenda, obviously later, but I mean, they they say they can continue. I know that they they lost some key personnel with Anthony and Neil. In my opinion, we should retain the E-TAC, A-TAC for other things. And I don't think that at some point that we shouldn't go with them for this either. I am just a little concerned that we might need more information from the state to kind of figure out exactly what they're expecting or what they'd like us you know, to see what they would suggest that we do. The the issue here is that the situation is new for everybody involved is what I keep hearing. And so everybody's kind of feeling their way through it, so to speak.
Okay, I guess that is if we did that and they're willing to continue return, that seems like it would be likely they would want us to rewrite the whole grant.
I don't know.
I just wouldn't want to see it cost the town another fifty thousand dollars or so, sure.
Okay, good point. Mark first. Mark just spoke, Joan?
After hearing your emails you just read, I understand now that yes, you'd have to rebid the same as you did the change.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Yes, ma'am, yeah, they they just came in this afternoon, so.
I also want to reiterate that there there would be no one on the site who would say Benish, that is gonna be tough. No one to come, no one to say, what do you think, you know? There will be no, no presence here, that's what I've.
Right. Linda.
I agree. We're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard spot here. And there, nobody's making it easy, which federally, I guess, nothing ever is easy. So, but I I guess we, if if they're asking for more time or to leave the spending or whatever, I would say that would be the best thing to do. But I also think that by the next meeting, they had better have the answers they need to give us because we need to get going on this too, you know? We don't want it to expire. We don't want, you know, Anthony is sure that his team can can complete the job. And Anthony has been here from day one with the grant, with Bridget, with us, working this. And and I have nothing, I mean, our meeting with Jeff with Benish was very good, very. And he did say that they could, they could have somebody here. But, yeah, how, I mean, if we need them now, they're eight hours away, you know, that's all there is to it. They don't have anybody hired yet. And so and they they don't, they've not been here. They don't know us and our town and the exact project that we're trying to put together here.
And they are not the ones who have read through all the documents explaining what drainage troubles we have, explaining what we can and cannot do. That's right. That's a lot of research that took a lot of time for these guys to
Yeah, and I just would like to make some points of clarification here, so. It was in Bridget's opinion, Bridget Mitchell, she recommends we don't vote on this tonight. But she forwarded comments from the state that we would require the R F Q. I don't believe in the email it said that the state would like more time. Only they just made the point that if we decided to get away from Benish, we couldn't just assign the project to somebody who would have to be an R F Q, so. I'll go Aaron and then Mark and then back to Joan.
Yeah, I think that's, so that's kind of, I had given it to Terry, you sent it to Scott, I believe. I had found the, what was it, back in twenty-three, was it? The original R F Q that was that was done way back and I had it sent to Scott. But it's it's very much, it looks more like a job posting than than like a a bid for bid for work. It's very much all about qualifications, but so my question is, if we do an R F group Q, is it almost like posting a position that somebody's still in? Do we have to cancel our contracts with Benish? Or consider anything regarding a contract with Anthony before doing an R F Q? Can we do an R F Q and just have every other aspect of it on hold? And, you know, Benish wants to do the R F Q, Anthony wants to do our R F Q, anybody wants to do the R F Q, but we wouldn't actually be making any decisions as far as what we'd be doing ahead of time, other than saying, hey, here's an R F Q. Almost like putting out a job posting for somebody for a job that's still occupied.
Right, so that makes sense. So if we didn't want to go with R F Q, we would, seems like we'd have to terminate the relationship with Benish on this particular item before we voted to put it out to R F U.
I'm, that's, that's what I'm wondering, is if we wouldn't necessarily would.
I think we would. I think to me, it kind of sounds like a dirty, underhanded thing if you don't, don't do it.
I mean, we're contractually obligated to
Right.
And for us to cancel that, we have to invoke the provisions in the contract to permanent. And the, and I mean, going to hire other folks to do the job you've got a contract for could be seen in the court as like interference with a business contract. Those kind of claims will get brought up sometimes, if it's not already termed.
I see. Thank you. Mark?
Reason I said when I said, I think, don't stand me is absolutely the right thing to do, but just make sure all your i's are dotted, your t's are crossed, because if we go out looking for work, no matter how generous and nice Benish is being, no offense against lawyers, but they could probably find a lawyer to come after the paperwork or something if we didn't do it exactly the way it needs to be done. So just be careful and do your research.
Good, thanks, Mark, Joan, and then Aaron.
I I don't think it would hurt anything to wait till your next meeting, two weeks from now to make final decision. Because number one, I do want Bridget to be comfortable with this. Headwaters has spent probably thirty thousand or more on the study before, we had to do before we could even write the grant. Not to mention how good the band writing itself. And we expect a future relationship with them. So I would like her to be very comfortable with the decision and if it takes her, you know, if we need another meeting to discuss it with her or whatever, that's fine. I don't think two weeks, I think a month is too long because I don't want to put Anthony back a month because it's already a tight schedule. But I don't think two weeks would be asking too much.
Yeah, and on that point too, if we needed to, I could call a special meeting before that two weeks. If a decision was made before that time, before the time. So Aaron, did you have some more questions?
Yeah, I feel like maybe, I don't know, if Scott, do you do you think there's any more research you could do that helped clear this up? Yeah, I feel like, maybe, I don't know, if Scott, do, do you think there's any more research you could do that helped clear this up for us?
Yeah, I mean, I've not looked in detail at these provisions and everything, so I can't, again, I'm not opining about that issue, so, again, I, I could read and find something else that, you know, was relevant for the board, but I don't, I don't know.
Do we, sort of, direct him to, uh, help us make sure we have all the information on the path for this?
I think that's a, a good idea. Uh, look, I saw Joan's hand up. You have another comment, Joan?
Well, I just, in reply to the statement that, um, Aaron made, I was thinking maybe we could request Jim Pop and provide us with a statement from FEMA, because we can't actually go directly to FEMA because our grant is, the state had to send our grant to FEMA because, so now the state has a grant. So, we're below that, so, but we could ask the state. Everyone written confirmation that this is how to proceed and what, you know? That shouldn't take a long.
Okay, yeah, thanks, that's a good suggestion. Okay, um, so do we have any other discussion? Chuck?
Has Benish actually written, any registration if they don't get a chance at it?
No, and the sense I got after talking with, uh, Tony Dirks and, I mean, even, uh, Jeff to a degree. I mean, Tony stated that they were more interested in serving clients than, you know, going after people for stuff like that. I mean, you know, it was a verbal conversation, everything like that, so, all things considered, but, um, I don't know that we're necessarily in danger of that. I mean, we did have a contract with them. There are, um, clauses within the contract that we can, we can exit the contract without cause. And there may be a case to be made that we might have costs as well. I don't know, I mean, that would be something for the attorney to, to clarify if, if we needed to, just because, you know, we had the expectation that we had a certain individual to execute the contract, so. But either way, um, it looks like that from those, from the provision that we could get out of that without an issue. Would, I mean, would you like to comment on that?
I think you summed it up pretty well. I don't really have a lot to add. I would just say, I don't, I don't, there's any, based on the clauses I've read, I don't think there'd be any advantage to us describing it as a forecause as opposed to a not-for-cause, because the fore, the not-for-cause was such an easy withdrawal. It was just give them notice, you know, a certain number of days and you're out. And so it was, it was such an easy, um, you know, without cause, that there's no reason for us to say it's for cause and then get into a hard thing about it.
Right, yeah, good point. Okay, so, um, do we have any other discussion on this one? Okay, uh, so the motion on the floor is to, put this one out to R F Q and as we have found out, that's probably, um, a little bit hasty. If we wanted to go to R F Q tonight, I think we'd have to cancel the Benish contract first. And so, um, in my opinion, we should let this motion fail and then if any other motions, the, the board wants to make any other motions, we can look at that after this. So, um, does anyone have a comment on that, or should we just go to a vote? Okay, seeing none, um, all those in favor? All opposed?
Hi.
All right, so motion fails? So is there anyone that'd like to make a follow-up motion to that?
Just leave it pending. I don't think we need a motion.
Do we need a motion to direct Scott?
I think that would be okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, Betterington City Attorney to do further review on the, uh, path board
of the FEMA brick grant.
And can I add, enter a letter to be sent to the, to Jim Poppen at the state to get a formal letter in what they are. Yes.
Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
That we add that to your motion? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'm seconded.
Okay, down to seconds. Okay, do we need any more discussion on this one? It seemed none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Okay, um, so, we do have a video to show, but I think I'll do that during trustee input. So, uh, so on to, uh, engineer. So now we're, um, going to discuss the Benish contract. Um, but, so we have a couple of points here, so discontinuing the Benish contract. And this one is going to be everything but the FEMA grant, since the FEMA grant was, uh, the item before that. And then also, um, we have a question on, on the, uh, the balances on the different, um, agreements that we had with Benish. So, um, would anyone like to make a motion to approve to discontinue the, uh, Benish contracts for the outstanding projects, sans the FEMA grant?
I make that motion.
Uh, makes the motion.
We'll second after discussion.
Aaron, seconds. Okay, and, and also to, um, excuse me, when we were updating the agenda items with the updated numbers, that was these items on here and the numbers we updated it to are the remaining balances. And the remaining balances, I believe, are also listed on, in the packet for each of those items. And so, um, so do we have any discussion on the approval to discontinue the Benish contracts, sans the FEMA grant administration? Maybe, yes, sir.
Uh, just, I think you need to maybe include directives as approval. We need to send a written notification. Where that will come from.
Okay, all right, so, um, I guess I'll, I'll make, I'll propose an amendment to the motion that if the motion passes, that we direct Mr. James to, uh, send the letter notifying any issue of the termination of said contract.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. Okay, Aaron, the seconds. So the discussion now is for the amendment, send the letter. I don't know if there's any question that we should do that. Does anybody have any discussion on that point only? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment?
Hi.
All right. Motion carries. So now we're back to the original, uh, motion that's been amended. So the approval to discontinue the Benish contracts, sans the FEMA grant administration, and also to direct Mr. James to send a letter to Benish that would find the discontinuation if this motion passes. So do we have any further discussion on that, Aaron?
Just to make sure, I mean, just with the questions arising around the FEMA grant, I would be certain though somewhere, are we already, beyond reasonable doubt, that no similar questions would arise from any of the contracted items?
Uh.
So, these items are not grants, are they?
Uh, no, sir.
Waters Smart Grant.
Looking at six A.
F R A grant.
You just brought it to town, hired to do, right? As far as I can.
Yeah, so the, the Water Smart Grant was, we were paying Benish to apply for a grant on our behalf, right? Or, or para grant on, on our behalf?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, um, I mean, I guess the question here is that does anybody think that Benish should continue any of these? And if so, which ones? Because the motion on the floor is to, uh, blanket, a blanket removal, uh, from them or of them from these items. Does, does anyone have a, a point on that? We have any further discussion? Yes, sir.
When you talk to them, did they show any interest? Did Benish show any interest at all, or are they?
It's kind of hard to say. I, um, I don't know that, that, so I, we talked to Tony Dirks, who was Anthony's former boss, and then we talked to Jeff Sockle, who was, I guess, Anthony, uh, Tony Dirk's boss. And, um, I mean, we got a, an email from Jeff today saying that they're still committed to doing all the projects and they understand if there's some that we'd like to go with Anthony, but, you know, it, so, at least on the official channels, they're saying that they are ready and willing and able to do all that. You know, um, so, Linda, did you have a, a point?
Well, as I, he was going to send you the ones that he really thought that they should be on. Did he send you that?
Yeah, let's look at that. Yeah. So the list, um, is, is mainly there to inform us of outstanding balances and draw attention to some things that were on, uh, our list from the packet that weren't on his list. But he, he doesn't draw any attention to any specific projects that he thought they would be, um, that, that they would like to take on. I guess you could say, I, I think it's more of a, a general statement that they made that, that they're still willing to work with us on, uh, the contracts, different agreements, I guess you could say. So Aaron, did you have a, another question or comment?
Yeah, no, it's just, it sounds like the, the item that just got all the red flags really is the brick grant and everything else, kind of like. Good, but.
Yeah, and that.
In love with it.
Right, and, and in my opinion, that's, that's kind of how it is. And it wasn't really until today where I got kind of a bevy of emails on it from different places that, I mean, there was kind of, there was, you know, advice that we should take it slow and understand what we're getting into and, but I didn't hear any specific advice on uh, until today, which I, I, uh, let you all know about, you know, via the email, so. Yeah, so, at least for that one, um, I'm comfortable with letting it sit for a little bit longer and, and try to get a, a direct statement uh, from the state and from FEMA via the state. And, and just to, I guess, make a hundred percent sure that they're aware, but what, of what, uh, we'd like to do here, because I, you know, I know we're off of that topic, but I would like to say too, that I would prefer to have An, Anthony's company run that grant, just because they base, he's basically been, um, the point man on it all, you know, so. But, so, right now, we're considering the, um, other agreements that we had with Benish, so do we have any further discussion on that one? Mark?
Do you have a question? So, these six, seven projects, has Benish, uh, eaten anything for me?
Uh, they have, and we do have some outstanding balance, balances with some of them. And, um, so, if, if this motion passes and we send them the letter, then they'll, I, I think in the email, he said that it would be the balances as of last Sunday, or, you know, Sunday, so.
So we own the work product from the balances then?
Yeah, that's my understanding, that we own the work balances, and if this motion, uh, passes, we'll, we'll be requesting all of the work product on those.
So we won't have to double pay for any work that they've already done?
I don't believe so. I mean, that's my understanding, right? I mean, it's, you know, I mean, we, we paid them to do those jobs and, and they did them to a degree, and we paid them up, up to where, you know, we ended it, if, if that's what the board decides, and so, uh, there's no reason why they shouldn't give us the output of that work, right?
So, so, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, did you have, did you want to follow up?
Well, I just want to make sure, because of the company switching, if any of that product would have to be redone by Anthony. No?
Oh. Okay, yeah, good question. Linda?
They were, Jeff was, I guess I would say, understanding in the fact that you could tell he even thought that we would go with Anthony. You know, because he said things like, he's been the guy that's been here, and he's the one that's done this and done that, and, and they made it seem like, uh, they were very understanding of that and that it would be no big deal, they, they understand, and.
They'd feel better if they put that in writing.
Yeah, I, I do, I get that too, yes. But, I, I mean, you know, I asked him, when are you going to get somebody hired? When are you, you know, are you sure you're coming, gonna fill that office and, and, blah, yeah. You know, not that they can't lie, they could, but, I mean, it, it's, they seem like it would be fairly easy just to sign the sheet that says you're done in seven days, you know, that there would be no issues with it. And, and, and he flat said, we are the ones that, that caused this issue. So we are trying to get past this issue. And so, and they are, they're, you know, I mean, so sweet. Anthony is ready for his own company, and that's good, but, um, you know, they, they made the decision, so.
Oh, again, switching isn't the right thing to do. It just, what people say isn't always actually what they do.
Right, right.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
We have lots of motion.
You guys want to, yes, forgive the motion?
Yeah.
So the motion was to, um, approve the discontinuation of the Benish, Benish contract, sans, um, the FEMA grant administration, and also to direct Mr. James to send the letter to Benish notifying them of said discontinuation if this motion passes.
I thought we already voted on that one.
We voted on the amendment.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we have.
All right, well, I think, I think, don't we have to wait till we get the word from the state? I mean, they're wanting us to put a hold on these things. Don't we need to?
Um, I don't. My sense is that that they're concerned with the grant and not necessarily with the local projects. And I know I myself would feel comfortable going with A T A C on these projects at this time. You know, the, we discussed the other one already, so, you know, I think in my opinion, holding off on a little, for a little while until we receive word back from the state is, uh, probably the best pathboard on that one. But for this one, I don't see an issue. Mr. James, do you have a comment on that?
I think it's, it's a big difference between two, two, just, um, one, we're up against it for some federal guidelines. They have to do it, and in these situations, we have a lot more say-so on how it goes, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there any, any more discussion on this? You guys want to give it a, a little bit before we call for the vote? Think about it. Call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
You all ready? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Is that a, hi, Linda?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, motion carries on that one. So now we're on to the approval of the contracts through, uh, Anthony, Theodore and Company, B K A A T A C. So now we're on to the approval of the contracts through Anthony, Theodore and Company, AKA ATAC. So we, we can see them all down there. These are the ones that have, I believe they all have documents in the packet, and Anthony volunteered to read the summaries on each of these, and so, um, I don't see a harm in having him do that before we call for motion, is that okay with the board? Okay, great. So, uh, thanks, Anthony.
Yeah, so, um, so what I did was, I took, I went to each one of our projects that someone's doing, and I tried to make the summary of the project, and then, um, the proposed scope for of what's left to complete each of those projects. And so, um, and then how I'm going to utilize the remaining balance that's on those projects from this October um, to complete them. So the first one's the water distribution model, um, and that was to support the update of the water facilities plan uh, for DNR compliance. Um, and Benish was paid for a water gems model using surveying data completed by a local surveyor for spearfish, all aspects. Uh, the model was used to determine the feasibility of a new wa- of a new water tank, uh, which then we could later on, uh, that's the North Water Tank, um, which the town received a five hundred thousand dollar art grants grant to construct. Model also determined that raising the existing water tanks was not substantial enough to prevent the needs for a booster pump. Uh, we completed the model, it's just the update to the water facilities plan that needs to be completed, and so that remaining balance is three thousand one hundred seventy five dollars. And, um, the town will get, um, the family files, that's the, the model files from Benish, and then, um, the, all I, I don't necessarily need those files, but I just, I have the model result, and so that's what I put into the facilities plan. Um, it was along with all our water projects. Uh, and that's, that ma- maintains our compliance with the state for all water projects, so we can get additional funding in the future on it. So that's that one. Um, the next one's the North Water Tank, um, we went out to bid, um, we designed then to page to design a hundred and twenty thousand gallon water tank, uh, on the property that was purchased from, the town purchased from Preston Family. Uh, the water model was used to determine the feasibility of the new water tank, um, the bids came in and doing some substantial value engineering. Uh, we got the tank to within the five hundred thousand dollar budget, close to that, five thirty, I think it was. And it's still expandable to a hundred and eighty thousand gallons, the foundation design. Uh, I approved those submittals that went to the tank manufacturer, and it's in, it's in construction right now, so soon as that thing's, uh, ready, uh, Quinn will be starting construction, so I have a remaining balance of thirty six thousand four hundred dollars to carry it through the construction phase. Um, designing business done, and also we have to write an additional easement, uh, to that, um, water tank. So that's included in here, uh, I've got some survey time, uh, so that way we can get a, go to shore, avoid some of the, um, conflicts that is still on the high. Uh, that's that one, and then the next one, and I spoke to Suzanne McKinley, uh, letting her know that, you know, the town still very much wants to complete this TWS RF, so they, you know, pull the money back. And so she was relieved to hear that, um, there's a remaining balance there, one sixty two, eight forty. Uh, my next step is to, what was then done so far is I wrote a water rights permit on Madison well, and I designed a water treatment plant, uh, to take care of our well number two that's contaminated with rare new bits. And then I designed all the pipe work connections for both hills, um, and we got a control panel, uh, designed for that north tank. Uh, what's left to be done is I got to send out, uh, steel bid request for the water tank, uh, the water treatment equipment manufacturers and for the well owner. So that's what I'll do almost immediately after you guys approve me. Uh, we've got a, uh, environmental clearance from DNR, so we received our FONZ, it's called, finding of no significant impact, and that's been published uh, for our sites, so that's all done. Um, and then once, once we've got the two sole sourced, uh, equipment and service providers, then we'll put out a bid for the pipe work that connects everything, because every, a lot of contractors, you want to bet on that. Just saying, I had a bid yesterday, and I had nine bidders on the subdivision, so there's lots of contractors who want to be. Uh, next one's the wa- the waste water treatment plant, all that's left here is the remaining balance to, uh, commission the plant, eight thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, we're waiting on that transmission from York and, uh, D City, Michigan. They said it's a couple weeks out, and we'll have it there, and once it's installed, um, and you've approved the budget for the items needed to reinstall it, uh, treatment plant will be running. I, I'm actually, so, just so you know, so not only Neil came with me, but John came with me too. Um, and so, you know, I've told John that we need to, we, we can be doing, we can be running that plant even with the transmission on its way, um, because we'll, we'll be able to meet that permit with the temperatures and that. We still have ultra filtration and public treatment there, so. And then, uh, the la- the loan coyote is the, basically that's um, to address the deficiencies in the sewer extension, went up to EFI, um, the sewer main, uh, was itself, uh, through the bill over. Uh, we, I designed a siphon, uh, to replace that two hundred feet, and then, um, that flooding is kind of part of a bigger project for the, for flooding in the town. Um, so we'll get the old cat files, and then, um, we'll incorporate the replacement of that two hundred one feet assuming into the TIP two project, because we need funding, that's the only reason that we didn't move forward with the fuck with the siphon. So that can go still under the, the TIP two project, the TIP two, uh, district area, we're in the next proposal, I recommend that we shift that, uh, because we did not get a developer's agreement, um, from PFI, so we have another developer that's wanting to pick up where that left off, and we can include this, uh, siphon in there. Um, so that's just to get that through construction, because we've already done the design. Um, and then the tip two, um.
Anthony, what was the total amount left on five?
Nine thousand seven hundred and forty.
Thank you.
And then the two, we initially had proposed that for the Preston property at the north end of town, um, and then the sewer water was set up there, water we're using for the North Water Tank, so that's not a problem. Uh, sewer though is still waiting for user at the end of it. Um, what we'd like to do is, uh, so we have developers on the west side that would want to use that sewer line, and could, could, could take advantage of that TIF district. And so we want to work with them to prepare a developer's agreement, um, prepare the district map, and then include uh, that siphon as a part of that, uh, infrastructure for that area in the district, and then, um, uh, in the developer agreement, we stipulate a feasibility study must be conducted by the town, which will require the developer to pay the vulnerable funds to create the bonds, because those funds that are used to create the bond are reimbursable to those people that are paying for them, either the developer or the town, and there's six thousand five hundred and sixty dollars left in that budget from the town side, we would have the developer uh, match, or, you know, augment that to get it to a bond. Once, once you have the bond, then you can draw from the bond, pay yourselves back as a reimbursement, and then move forward with construction documents and construction on, you know, additional sewer infrastructure on the west side. So that's that. And then the last one's the C MOM, um, that has to still get, get updated. Um, there's thirty four hundred dollars left, but the main, uh, aspect of the C MOM is, um, to update the, uh, waste water facilities plan. And so that's, that's what we'll have left to do that, and incorporate any of the, um, work product from Cameron Sewer System. Cameron Sewer System was a part of the FEMA grant, and so, um, some of that stuff, um, the FEMA grant was supposed to help us with. Um, now without it all, waiting, see, um, it, I'll be doing it with budget than I would have, so. Um, those are those projects.
Okay, um, also on these, it looks like the last three are tied to the brick grant, is that true? It says they must be awarded together. Does that mean that we can't, uh, approve those until we've decided what to do with that?
So there, there are sewer related projects, um, so that it relates to the, uh, waste water facilities plan, because the C MOM, um, I think it's so in order for me to have data from the INI study that's a part of the brick grant and the, um, proposed gravity conversion of Whitty Street, um, I'll need that data, obviously. Uh, if I was to apply that data by someone else, it would be, right?
Okay.
So you can award them, um, but I wouldn't be providing that data, is what that means. Without being provided to. Because I don't have enough funds to, to provide that data and write the fee.
Yeah, right, okay. All right. So then, uh, just to clarify then, so we could do an approval of these all tonight, and it would just be the understanding that pending the, the brick scoping grant resolution, current issues. The, the re- but that may have sounded weird, um, I'm not talking about a resolution, I'm talking about getting that issue resolved. So we could still pass all of these, the understanding is that uh, once that gets resolved, whomever is going to be awarded that would have to share the data with us to complete those projects. Okay, all right, thank you for that. Um, so that, would anyone like to make a motion to?
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll make the motion to approve Anthony and company for these contracts. One, one through seven.
Okay, Linda makes the motion to approve. Uh, seconds, do we have any further discussion on this? Any questions? Uh, we'll go, Aaron, and then Mark.
All right, just real quick, so the camera ownership. Yes, you, you, ATAC is getting cameras?
Not without the brick right, oh.
And, I mean, okay.
But we don't need the cameras to do any of these projects on this list.
Right, right. Yeah, just, just move more of a curiosity.
Okay, uh, Mark?
Just the previous thought to discontinue the contract, is that same kind of deal, uh, no cause, or even we can just terminate the contracts without notice or anything, or do we have to give them a few days' notice?
If you ask me, these, I mean, these are descriptions of proposals, they're, they don't, they're not really formulated as contracts, you know, it's not like we have sort of terms of, um, what happens in reach, those kind of things, so I mean, you know, I unfortunately, I mean, when you, when you have this, when you have a situation like this, where you have the proposal written up, and then you have sort of some conversation, these oral conversations about the agreement become important because the written agreement comes deep to that, so, um, ordinarily, I would probably prefer something that had a little more detail as far as those type of questions, but, um, but yeah, so I, a- a- as of right now, there's no provision of seven.
I just don't want there to be repercussion from hiring your guy, people, if you notify them that they're not going to be part of it.
Okay, so I will clarify, so a Benish contract, and I wrote all of them for you, um, has a front end document that has the terms and conditions, and then it has the attachment A, which is what you see here in your back. Uh, my terms and conditions are identical to Benish's, that was going to say Benish in terms and condition. So you can pull up their terms and conditions, and the only thing that's, and this was vetted by, um, legal counsel before, when we first signed terms and conditions with Ben. So we, the towns already looked at those terms and conditions and found that fine, and that is exactly what you would be getting with my, uh, contracts. The front of the document is just a one pager that summarizes, and there's a signature, right? So in terms of the stipulations in my contract, they're identical to what you've already signed in Ben.
Okay, um, so should we consider an amendment to the motion to approve pending legal review of sent, said contracts? So that's something the board would be interested in, or? Uh, Aaron?
Yeah, I'm thinking about it, it, so we've got a question of, so essentially Scott was really just directed to send the letter confirming that these contracts, and it's a seven day seven day notice, um, and then these really aren't, I mean, I guess I, what I'm getting is that these are structured less as contracts and more as proposals, I guess, maybe for
Well, I always brought the attachment A when we did the contracts, and then the document that was signed is the terms and conditions in front back, so, um, there is no difference in previously voting and bringing up.
So could we put a condition in the motion that essentially follows the same terms and conditions that were followed, and that, that were posted in the previous contract, what's in them? Essentially, just file the same contract, but a little older.
Yeah, uh, I mean, that's essentially what we're doing, and, and so it may make, I think it does make sense to just make that stipulation in the motion that, that that's the intent of the board.
Does, does that sound fair, Scott? Like essentially we're following Benish's contract, but under the?
Yeah, um, unfortunately, it's very sad mindset that we're trained to always think of the worst case scenario.
I appreciate that.
And I, I think I understand the board really likes Anthony, I, I don't know Anthony as well as he does, but I like him too. I don't, I want this to work, but, um, if I'm always thinking of worst case scenarios, um, yeah, I mean, the same, well, there's a written contract from the prior guy, so it's the same, um, it may have some problems to do it that way, because you may there's a, there's a, there's a law called the statute of frauds, uh, that is important in contracts, and it's not saying you must commit fraud, it's the name of the statute. And what it means is certain contracts have to be in writing, and, um, so one of the, one of the types of contracts that has to be written is one that cannot be performed within the year. I mean, I don't know if all these projects are ones that can or can't be completed within a year, but if it met that criteria and it wasn't in writing, then it would not be enforceable. Uh, just, you know, the real estate transactions also have to be in writing, so there's certain contracts that you just can't have a, unfortunately, these days you can't have a handshake, but um, so, so again, me advising you guys as to, is there a bad scenario that happens of, you know, we agree to this and it goes south, I mean, it may be, but, you know, so I, I'd be more comfortable seeing a contract with the same, you know, the same terms, and we'll write them off, and it'll look the same. But, um, just sort of orally wave with it and saying, yes, it, it'll be similar, I, I, I'm a little, I'm uncomfortable about it, so.
Okay, so in your opinion, um, we should, at the minimum, we should amend the motion, so pending legal review of the actual contracts that we'd be signing, um, that these attachments are describing, then you'd be more comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, I guess I'll, I'll make the amendment to the motion in that respect, did you have a, another change you'd like to make?
Just a question before that, would it help at all if we kind of compartmentalize, because there's seven here, I mean, some of these, like water distribution model, there's really not much consequential to that. You know, so I don't know if it would help for Anthony's time, just so we can get, I, because I think there's a movement where you need to get back to work kind of thing.
Yep.
So whatever we can.
I don't, I don't mind if he has one agreement that covers all of these different attachments, to say, you know, that's, that's fine, as long as there's one, one, he doesn't have to have it separated from all seven of these things, but like Benish did.
I, I tried to make it clear that the terms and conditions are exactly the I tried to make it clear that the terms and conditions are exactly that, not similar, the same, 100% the same. Even says the state is out Dakota, which is what the previous attorney has replaced from Illinois. Um, Vennish kind, Vennish terms and condition, so you see an attachment A, just like you had Vennish. You see terms and conditions, we could print out an old Vennish contract, and I would tell you, take that and multiply by seven, that's our terms and conditions page. And then we have a front signature page, which I signed as President OJ Tech, and Cal signs as the town president. So there is nothing missing, that's, that is what it is.
Well, we don't, we don't have the terms and conditions in our packet, I think that's what Mr. James is alluding to, all we have are the attachment. Yeah, so, um, I mean, at this point, I guess I'll go ahead and, and make the motion or make the motion to amend the current motion on the floor to approve these, in that we approve them, uh, pending legal review of the actual contractual document, and, um, I don't foresee that taking a long time, but uh, just to kind of keep all our ducks in the row and cross the Ts and dot the Is, so, uh, anyways.
Should be contingent upon, or, and then approval or contingent upon, I'm not the
So I don't know that that, that, uh, point has any value, well, it may have value, I don't know if it's necessary in this, do you have a comment on that, Mr. James?
I think first what you wanted is, is
All right, okay, so the, that was the motion to amend, um, is there a second?
Nothing.
Hey, Aaron, seconds, so do we need further discussion on this one? I mean, um, so this is the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment, okay, all those in favor of the amendment? So the, the motion carries. Motion carries, so, um, the amendment was passed, and so the original motion should read, um, to approve all of these contracts pending legal review of the actual contractual document, so do we have any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? All right, the motion carries. Okay, uh, thank you very much, Anthony, I know this is a nerve-wracking process, and, uh,
I mean, if I can say one last thing before this, so, um, I have, so there's local, there were local team members in our proposal, and there were remote team members, right? And, and the team that was assembled for the female brick grant.
Okay.
Um, the local team members, myself, I was terminated by Jeff Sackel when he became the business manager. Air sick, so, and the other team members came with me, the farm PT, so local team, there is no one in the office. The remote members of the team, you met Maria, I introduced you to her, she's supposed to be the candidate. She has her qualifications, and they're good qualification. It is important that if those members, they, they do not have, I think that I have Jeff, uh, Dan Vice, who was at KLJ with me when I was hired as the town engineer here, and he is willing to step in and take the role that Maria was taking. And he is more qualified in the Battle Creek flood model than she is, she's from Kansas, not her fault. He's from school of mine, so, you know, that, it's important that the town gets the opportunity to see the qualifications, be it how Vennish plans on replacing a local engineer who's your town engineer and town planner, and how I intend to replace the qualifications of people like Maria and Andy Miller, who is environmental. And so that org chart can then be looked at, and you guys can weigh the qualifications. And the only other thing I'll say is, is that if they're still expending funds, then the funds are getting completed, and that's the concern I would have.
Okay.
And some of the things that I set up, such as rental, rent, rentals for the, the cameras, it's, I've been told today not stopped yet, so without any direction, they'll continue that rental, and we're not getting anything from it.
Right.
They're on the hook for it, not the town. So that's the only concern I would have, is funds get to, to, to do it in action.
Yes, sir, and we did talk to Jeff about the camera when he was here, and he said that that any, um, remaining balance on the camera is essentially going to be pro-rated because they were able to use it on, with other communities, things like that. I mean, that was one, the, when we brought up the camera with him, that was his response, so, uh, but I mean, there's, there's a lot of different, I guess, factors to weigh on this, and so I do appreciate your comments, and I, I don't, uh, I don't discount what you say at all, you know, in that regard, but, um, anyways, uh, does anyone at the board have any comment? Okay, so we don't have anything for planning and zoning, so we're on to legal opinion on operational use of vacuum truck by contract. So would you like to present that, Mr. James?
Sure, uh, I guess I had, I had a question a little different than, uh, you know, I sort of combined two issues from the last, last meeting into just one opinion, so I had two questions, which was, um, you know, one, um, what do I, I had concerns about a proposal that trustee service had uh, to operate this truck, and then number two, um, does he need a CDL essentially to operate it? Um, so, um, yeah, I, I think the proposal as it stands is fine, if the board wants to do it, I, I just, I'm recommending that, um, there'd be a little extra language, language added uh, that basically he's, um, you know, not acting as an employee of the town, uh, that basically conflict interest, uh, if it's, if it's that, so he's acting as a contractor of genius. That would be language, you know, that there's this $5,000 limit, and he's not authorized to be paid more than that, because that triggers that really awful law about, and that, we're so human, so we don't want that one. Um, and then, um, you know, I said, the one, the one, the first thing I noticed in his proposal, and, you know, this major's been sort of the way he drafted it, but being it says, um, that the lead operator will have a provision of assistance. And so then, and again, the second question I was asking is, does he have to have one? So, you know, those two things are kind of, kind of at odds, so either, either the proposal should say, I don't, you know, the lead operator won't be required to have one, or lead operator will have one, and then he gets one, and the second issue kind of goes away. So that's, that's what I saw, the proposal. Um, the second question about whether you need a CDL to operate a, a vehicle on town roads, um, my conclusion, looking at this everywhere I can look, was I, I really tried to find a different way, but, um, no, I, I don't have any, you know, there's, there's cer- certain exceptions that are listed in statute, and I've got them in that statute there on the, uh, that's probably the third or fourth page, thirty-two, twelve, eight, nine. And, uh, you know, it has some farm exceptions and some firefighting and those kind of things, uh, but they're certainly not like a, if, if it's an emergency situation, then yeah, there are some exceptions, but, uh, but not for kind of the use we're contemplating here, I don't see anything to fit in any of those exceptions, so um, I think the answer is, again, I'm assuming, I'm assuming this truck weighs one point six thousand pounds.
Oh, yeah.
So like it's a, a truck is a big truck, so, um,
Full, definitely.
So, so I, I, my thing is that you do need a CDL to operate it on town roads, um, again, that's, that's because it's any highway, the definition of highway, um, I use the theory if you're driving it across a parking lot or something, or across, you know, somebody's yard, you might not need it, but, but on a road, uh, you have to have it, is my opinion, so. And, and it could have adverse consequences, um, if something happened, you know, the, the insurance, our insurer can say, well, you know, this voids your policy or whatever, and, or, you know, this is, um, you know, somebody gives us for what's called negligence and trustment, you know, that he's given some, like, let somebody drive something you knew they shouldn't drive. Usually negligence and trustment comes up to you, in case somebody's too many drinks or something at a bar, so, but this, this is sort of the same, same concept, giving somebody a truck you knew couldn't, right, license to drive.
Okay, very good, um, so there was no board action requested on this item, but I guess, uh, if there's any questions for Mr. James from either the board or the, uh, audience, we can spend, you know, five, seven minutes on this and, uh, and discuss this if, if you all want to, if not, we can just move on. Aaron?
Yeah, it comes up again on the public remarks, but, yeah, my real, my, um, my goal with drafting, so the contract thing kind of surprises me that it's, it's more appropriate to be as a contractor than as an employee. We've had other things I thought we kind of had set up that trustees do, but kind of as an employee, not as a contractor, but anyway, um, so that's kind of, I thought that would be a bit normal often, but I guess subcontractor is more appropriate from the conflict interest perspective.
Just, just the normal rule in a conflict interest situations, you can't supervise, you can't supervise someone who's an employee that has decision-making over them.
Okay, right, so I'd be my own boss, essentially, all right, all right, where, where the contractor, subcontractor's a safer route to go with that. Okay, and then as far, so I kind of tried to word it, and I, I don't, I don't want to get a CDL, but somebody has to have a CDL, we have some folks who could drive it in the interim, but if it was, my, my idea was if it were to be a long-term thing, and the town was like, all right, we're just gonna rely on you to do this year after year, then it would be, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna go get a CEO, because I don't have any reason, but if the town wanted me to get one, and pay for one, for me to get one, that's fine. But, um, I, I think some of this may, maybe cleared up further in other discussions, uh, and, uh, thank you for clarifying the difference between um, city highway, still highway, if it's a road, it's a highway.
But the word highway, I mean, it means different things in different places in statutes, but, but, and when you're talking about driver licenses, they mean any road, anywhere.
Right.
Um, if you're talking about, you know, funding for a, you know, US highways, that makes something different, but, but here, they mean any road, even if it's, even if you're driving on a section.
So that kind of changes the game, because the thought was, all right, we could get it going to where we can drive around town, but e- even if, if even that's off table, then it's well, I mean, so you, basically, the only time you wouldn't need the driver was unless you're sitting there for jetting along that case.
Yeah. Uh, Chuck?
Well, I've researched that some, and there are several different kinds of CDOs. First of all, there's one, the initial one is the weight, and second is whether or not it has air brakes or not, which falls under the mechanical race, then also if it's a combination vehicle, whether it's a towing trailer or or a tractor situation, and, uh, basically, it does follow the criteria of the weight, and it does have air brakes. Uh, as far as combination, that doesn't apply, so it would be a very minimal.
I think it was classified as smart.
Yeah, air brake endorsement.
That is air brakes, and that gives you the, uh, GBW, and as far as the roads that are on, if it's basically a state highway or county highway, I don't think it would probably fall in, in the line on city streets, however, they are public streets, so you're kind of splitting hairs, you know? When you go from the fast media to something else.
All right, thanks, Chuck. Okay, um, so I think that's that for that one, does anyone have any other questions or anything? Uh, no, so many, so let's move on to legal B approved trophy road water users agreement. And, um, would you like to introduce that one as well, Mr. James, because I believe you helped us out on that one, too?
Sure, uh, so this is just, um, we had this situation down there with, um, folks who were getting services, but really weren't, um, we had no agreement with them about what happens if something to be repaired and maintained, essentially, and I think it was Chuck that was having some, just need something, you know, what else can basically, have an understanding with these folks about what'll, what'll happen. So essentially, the agreement is, you know, we're, we'll provide, continue to provide them portable water, and they, you know, again, if there's a maintenance issue, they're sort of what we, you know, responsible for, and I, I didn't, I tried not to make it too complicated, but, but, you know, and, and I also included like a, um, sort of a cover letter, and it's not, um, I don't know, I, I, I'm not in love with it, but it's just, it's just saying, hey, you know, this is, try to be friendly about it, this is agreement, you know, we're, we're not, um, out to get any money here, we just want to make sure the government remains this kind of thing, but, um, I don't know, again, I think this was, um, I, I hope Chuck can actually look at it, because this is kind of what, this is what
Basically, we're this, that, we're supplying water to, uh, three to four residences that are outside of the city limits, it's nothing new, however, uh, the maintenance on that has been an issue over the years, they kind of, depending on the line, Anthony brought up a good point, that if we have a way of terminating the service um, within the city limits, to where it goes out of the city limits, which we do, I've been concerned for several years about uh, the service line that goes under the highway, and, uh, that apparently, uh, according to the engineer, uh, does not belong to the town. And, uh, where our viability terminates, the septimeter pit on the east side of Highway forty, east. So any repairs, or I've been kind of paranoid about that. Uh, one-inch iron line, steel line that goes under the highway, liability there, uh, if it should happen to break, we come to the highway. Uh, the limitation that would happen there is crazy, um, we can tap a six-inch line that is on the north side of Highway forty and terminate that line that was under the road, however, if it is not the town's line, then it would be up to the landlords that are on that line to, uh, share, uh, making a new path. Anthony has indicated he did not want to shut that main down, uh, to make it has to have be a wet tap. Uh, my wet tap tool goes to an inch, and I, my opinion, to service those houses should be minimum of inch and a half to two inches, which would require, um, separate contractor to physically do the wet tap, so, and by that uh, explanation of the wet tap is, is both the apparatus up to the main, and you actually can tap that uh, make it live without shutting the main down, that is called a wet tap. So that's something that should be in the mix, I believe, yet this year. With, with the contract that we have with those folks on the east water use, we've had a master meter that tells us if there is a leak. Uh, so you compare the individual meters with the master meter and see if there's a huge difference somewhere in that line. Over the years, we've just, you know, finding someone locally to repair the leak, and they were billed for the water, I remember one time that uh, eleven hundred dollar water bill out there. Was forgiven, and, uh, so it's kind of setting precedents. So I, I think it's very important to address this connection this year.
So I just want to say one thing, that, and, and so in my draft agreement, where I have five B, and so, I mean, I've got, I've tried to draft the claim sort of broadly, so it's just basically they're responsible from the point of connection to whatever next to them, so if we want to move the connection or move, you know, where we're connecting the water, it doesn't change the agreement, right? It's still that, that we're responsible only to the point of connection, and they're responsible from the point of connection, they're out. Yeah, so, so that's, that was what I, how I tried to shift it.
Okay, uh, you have, uh, yes, sir.
I guess this is me.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's, uh, we don't have a, a water district, so it's just three, four individuals. They use a lot out there. So I don't have authority to sign any agreement or anything. Uh, that's, I can take the two one. From there, um, Tom and Chuck, I agree with him, I think it would be good trying to get that line off from under these ones. Especially since it was still Especially since it was still long ago, but. Terry, did you look to see when they put those two houses in?
I did not.
It was probably done, but. Previous owners of the vine, but two houses out there, and that was probably in the early savings. So, um. I think we're on borrowed time. With what's under there. And I was very young at that time, so I don't. We didn't. Want to put in the line out there, but I have to get out a few times. Let's get you. And Chuck, and I can't remember exactly what's, what we found when you dug it up, because I had a lot of water leaks. So, but it would be nice to, to get it moved. Be a little better, and I think that would help. Us, as far as being more willing to share the cost.
Right, so, um, yeah, I appreciate your comments, sir. And as far as the water users agreement, is there anything in there that? That doesn't look right to you or, or you would prefer to see something different or?
I think that, that's fine, if we can. If we can move the tap to the north side of the highway. So that we don't have to mess with the highway. Try to, try to face any foreseeable problems that we might have, because I know that. And that we can't remember whether it's like plastic or black plastic going up there. But if there's one of the two, it's not steel.
Okay.
And so if we can get rid of that part. Oh, that would be good.
Alrighty.
I think we can. Or the money. Just like this. Get them to work on it, yeah.
Alright, uh, Linda.
Ellen, to your knowledge, there, there was never a contract between the city and the group of homes out there? You, you weren't even a teenager yet, okay.
Where did you start her?
That was, uh, my folks moved here in nineteen seventy. And that's three years later, I found.
Oh, well. Okay.
Uh, yeah, uh, O'Neill. Sold. He's the land, so we're two houses. That's what we, all of them just sending water because. We got three. Pretty shallow wells there, my house. And that water's not good for livestock. That's all we use to water. So if you agree on this. Look at, try to tap on this side, I think we, we come back. At the top of my people.
Okay, I mean, uh, so the agreement states that from the main out is you guys would be responsible for it. So, um, I mean. Are you, are you saying that you would like the city to tap the main on the north side of the highway prior to signing the agreement, is that what yours?
No, I'm saying that you'll say, you, you will tap it on the north side. Not actually do it, but retake it.
Okay.
So then we'll put the. We'll, we'll dig up where, where we're at. And back it up to where you want to tap it.
Okay, um. Chuck, did you have a comment on that?
Well, there needs to be a meter pit there so that. Uh, we have a master meter for the east users. And since there's three houses, it would have to be. Like a half a two inch compound meter because a regular meter does not register low usage. So if somebody's, one of the houses just used them in a whole, I would say, to run into that with. Corner pantry up here, they were getting by the thousands and thousands of gallons of water because. Uh, it did not register low usage, that would be, well, what happened here is a low usage. Compound meter put in, uh, and then. We would, uh. Coordinate that with the usage on the other meters to determine whether it's a leak or not.
Okay, so that's an added stipulation to tapping that mean is we need to make sure we have that.
It should be tapped on the north side of the highway, a meter pit, a master meter pit up there. And there's only one meter in there now, so, you know, it would have to be, you know, it's usually a half compound meter. Achieved, uh. It would be in the tool cost of getting it changed over and then from that point on, it's, it's theirs, you know.
Okay, um, so the item on the agenda is to approve the water users agreement. I mean, I, I personally would not have a problem with you all wanting to tap that main to get your line out from under the highway. And uh. You know, I, I think that's a responsible thing to do, but the, the item on the agenda is only to approve the agreement and so. If, if it required a board action to agree to that, then we would have to do a separate one at that, uh, at a future meeting. Just to, just to clarify here, uh, I, I know your comment, your commentary was kind of more, um, in the vein of. What you, what you like to see happen in there, and in my opinion, I think that's a good idea, uh, but just, just to. For the clarifying point, just for administrative purposes, that the item on the agenda tonight is only the water users agreement, uh, draft, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you. So with that, um, I guess, entertain motion, uh, for approval of the water users agreement.
Looks good to me, I'll make that motion.
Thanks for the motion. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, so, uh, we had a lot of input from Mr. Bishop and Chuck, so would you like to, uh, open the discussion on the agreement?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm entirely clear, so it's feeding these here, right?
And myself, you know.
Right there.
So the line's coming down straight shot here, where do you know about where heads north?
It's coming off from. Right there, the intersection a little further.
Yeah, boat back towards you, back a little further, somewhere right in there.
And a heads up.
That's Brophy Road, you're looking out, looking green, that is out there. Where you see, uh. Around face. That's where the actual line is now.
So it runs across these properties. And none of this is in town. As of now.
Right.
Right, because this, uh, item, if any user's property is annexed, the town and user service shall automatically convert to in-town status. And be governed by them current ordinances and rates, now that's. It's not a thing, but if one of them were to add, should that get the responsibility of, like, let's say one of these annexed. Somehow, would that get the responsibility of the line that goes all the way this way over to the town, from private to town?
No.
Would still be.
It can't be, but yeah, I, I see what you're saying, yes.
If any user's property is annexed, then that all now falls under town ordinances, does that mean now it's our property, it's, the line is our responsibility to their meter?
Right, I don't.
Including passing over other people's properties.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That's an interesting question. In, in order for that to happen, it would have to be a contiguous to the town borders, right? And is that fulfillment required at this time?
Not at this time, it's thinking of.
Yeah, so that's an interesting, uh, look ahead there.
But I think. You know, like, I mean. If this were the annex, and then they could annex, and then that line, you know, just worst possible scenario.
Yeah, that's an interesting point.
You have the exact same scenario with turnaround place. Right, the houses on the east side are not in the city limits. And this would be exactly the same scenario that these people are not in the city limits.
Good, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Or we do this contract and clean that up so it'd be our agreeing to furnish some water.
I would say that, um, it's a good concern, but you, you go to the next paragraph, which is mine, you'll see that, again, we got thirty day outfalls there, so if we did need to jump out in that, which I'm using and revise it.
Uh, like, hands up, we're out, okay. Yeah, that's a good trigger, then, I'm good with it, so.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on the agreement? Hey, you seeing none, all those in favor?
Uh, hi.
Uh, any motion carries?
Well, you, we can back on the agenda and just. The tap.
Yep.
Yes, sir, yeah, and, um, so. That agenda item would be, uh, approved, tapped for, uh, essentially the. The neighbors referred to as the Brophy Road Water Users.
Now, why would you use, uh. Eastern most, uh, instead of Brophy? So that there isn't any confusion with the Brophy Road District.
Oh, okay.
Because that is the, is a governmental.
Alright.
Road District, and that's one of the reasons there, why the town can't annex it because it's already on the tax.
We're playing it real.
Yeah.
I see, interesting.
We have to give it up before you think. I'm saying that, well, it's a competition.
Thank you. So, uh, did you capture that?
Thanks, Ellen.
So it's the East Promota, East Promosa Water Users.
I, I took that chance for you.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, right. So on the agreement, it refers to them as the Brophy Road Water Users.
Right.
Right, okay. So, um, I guess just for, uh, completeness, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we update the agreement as passed. To, uh, instead of Brophy Road Water Users, we refer to them as the East Promosa Water Users. Okay, uh, Aaron, seconds, and I would, Mr. Bishop isn't here, uh, so, but I would, uh. I, I, I just think it's kind of funny that he'd like to be referred to as East Promosa, but there's no chance of annexation, just kind of funny to me, maybe it's just me, but.
Not yet.
Alright, okay, I need further discussion on that one? Any others in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, okay, motion carries, thank you very much, so, uh, Marshall, yes, sir.
I had a couple of other minor updates on legal issues, if you want to take those.
Absolutely, yeah, what's here?
I, I just, because I, I was asked, I kind of made a list, just because you guys can do so much to do. I made a list of like eight items, and so two items would have, that we asked me to do have not, um. Addressed, yeah, and so I just wanted to, I have made some progress, but they're not anywhere near complete, so, um. The first thing you asked me to do was to look at extraterritorial agreement issues and to reach out to some other folks. I've done that, um, I've reached out to, um, Pennington County State Attorney's Office, you know, attorneys there in Civil Division. Um, and they, um. They were somewhat familiar with the, the issue, they might have spoken to the planner there once about it. Um, they were of the opinion that there needed to be. Some meeting between maybe the attorneys and the planners, um, first, and then probably to have a meeting with the, with the Board of, uh, County Commissioners and, and Pennington after that. Sort of setup meeting, uh, they said they thought, you know, that it made a lot of sense, uh, with the way that, you know, development was here and that, um, they didn't know that they necessarily oppose it. I do, um. There's still, there's obviously, there's, there's the one mile extraterritorial agreement with the county Custer two. Um, and just to remind everybody the difference between those two, um, so the one mile agreement basically says that we. Get control or say over those plating decisions. Um, and the three miles, the opposite is, is that they get to say, the plating decision, we get to comment. We get to offer our comment and information. And the one mile, they get to comment, and three mile, we get to comment. So that's kind of, uh, kind of backwards on that, but, um, it doesn't have any, I know that the, um. Marshall slash police chief here was here last time, and, uh, he had some input about that. Um, just to be clear, the extraterritorial agreement has nothing to do with law enforcement jurisdiction or anything like that, it only deals with planning. It's about planning, and that's it, it's, it's the only topic that it's about, and so, um. So, yeah, it doesn't, doesn't give us other special powers, you know. Um, so I, I'm, again, I'm in touch with those folks in Pennington, and, uh, I will continue to maintain that contact and try to get those things in the works. Um, I did speak with Tracy Kelly, State Attorney's Office here in Custer about the one mile, she said, you know, her view is, it looked like it was working pretty well. But they didn't have the commission seem to be happy with it, they assumed that they would renew it, and it made sense to renew it. So I think we just need to kind of plan on, you know, making that overture to the county to try to renew that. Um, she said she didn't think a three mile made no sense for Custer, uh, because it, it just. You know, we don't have, I guess, a lot of things going that direction in Custer County, so. Anyway, uh, that's that topic, and then the other one, uh, was the issue with the booster pumps. And contacting the insurance folks on that and everything, and so I did, um, I did talk to the claims adjuster about that. Um, I think, I think that Kelly talked to him too a couple of times, um, I mean, it was certainly my sense that they're going to deny that claim. Um, I, I don't think that they're gonna, I don't think they're gonna honor that claim, I think they're going to point that it's, um, a manufacturing problem. And so therefore, not, they're not responsible, um, is what, what, we don't have an opinion yet, they haven't given us an opinion, but I just, I got the strong feeling that was how they were. Leaning, and they didn't really have anything else to, you know, to, to lean, to, to give us on that. Um. So with that knowledge, I then started to try to do some other steps to see if there were other remedies available to these folks who had this issue happen to them. Because the next thing I was sort of thinking about was basically, um. Are, you know, was there a recall of this specific pump? And, um, are there any warranty periods still remaining? I talked briefly with Chuck about this, I've talked to, to kind of supply group a couple of times, I'm still kind of waiting return calls from those guys. Uh, there were a couple of models of this particular pump, it's called the Grunfoss Scala two pump. And, um, there were like two model years, it was twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen that were recalled. Um, but it was specific like production runs, and so my understanding is if it's not in those production runs, then Grunfoss isn't gonna, isn't gonna help anybody. Uh, but I've been, I'm trying to run down the, sort of the numbers and, you know, matching those up, uh, makes to see if, um. We're, sort of get lucky, it's in those, in those batches. Um, I saw a bunch of people, you know, research this online, where a lot of people complaining about it, saying, well, mine's not in that run, it, it's, it's crappy too, you know? And I was like, they, they, everybody thinks this, this entire model seems to be a bad pump, even outside of those production runs, it had, you know, what they saw, design defects. So, um. So ultimately, I mean, it, it may, it may be up to these folks, you know, um. They, they may need to file a product liability claim or something, you know, to, to go after that, it, it may not be, it may not make sense to them, but, because it may not be. The money we're talking about that they are probably out is probably not enough money to go file a lawsuit over. Uh, it's probably, it, it creates a sort of bad set of incentives, um, which I, I feel, you know, um. I, I feel like it's, it's, um. It's unfortunate, the situation that this is just kind of running to, but I, I think the best way we can help them, that I can tell you is to, is to try to see if we can identify it belonged to one of these two categories recalls, or if there's a warranty coverage at all still. Um, we'd have to help them with that, because we, we're the ones who purchased it, you know, and we have the information about purchasing. And they, they didn't purchase it, but they can still make product liability claims even if they're not purchasing, so. Um, but, but yeah, that's, that's kind of what I found on that.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Okay, well, moving right along to um law enforcement amendments, complaints and um. Marshall report, I don't see Marshall here, so I don't think.
Next week, it's true.
Starting.
He says it's next week.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, like apparently as soon as they contacted them, they. Pour a whole bunch of stuff on do this before you come do that, before you come get this by this. Like something even to the point of he has that very specific animal and a certain amount of it. Yeah, so he's jumping through those hoops, but um I'm not sure if we'll see him again before he actually goes to class, but.
I suppose.
Uh, Trey.
Um I don't see the discussion about changing his title on minutes. Um. What we can decide what I think.
Law agenda.
Thanks, Ricky. And the three.
It's most of them made the trial.
Yeah. So that that item was resolved at the time since the motion failed. So. We want to revisit it. We'll have to add it back to the agenda at another time. Yeah, so the the fact that it failed provided a resolution or that item was resolved rather is another way to say it.
Yeah.
Because I'm going to come back to figures too.
Right, yeah. Right, so yeah, until he's available to do that, which won't be for a while now since he's gonna be at training.
I mean, I could get some numbers because it's just a matter of finding out how much it costs to wrap up the vehicle and get advantage.
Possibly, I don't, I don't know if if uh there's anything else involved that. Uh, John.
And the law enforcement manual and entitlements, so that would have to be changed.
Right, yeah. Change from marshal to chief of police. Right, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you for that. Um so Custer County Log, do you have anyone here? Um I don't. So there's no complaints listed. Um we also had um. Along with complaints, we had commendations or compliments. So that's not on there either, but. If anyone has a compliment for anybody, I suppose I could entertain hearing it.
Entertain.
Okay.
You suppose.
Uh I I thought that was a, I thought that was a nice thing to have on there, so I'll try to make sure that it. If I don't see it, then we put, make sure it stays on there. Anyways. Okay, uh, did you have one, Aaron?
No, just before we throw in the public works, let me take a recess.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead, do like, uh, you guys want to do a ten minute recess before we hit public works?
Okay.
Okay, uh so reconvene at eight oh three. Thank you.
You, I like it, pop and stuff. Okay.
Yeah, well. Seven fifty-three. All buttery.
Goochy.
I would like some popcorn.
I said popcorn sounds good, basically.
Well, he's got some on his knee.
That's okay. Thanks, Al.
Yeah. Uh Cookie, I'll pass up the meeting zone.
What are you doing, Shelley?
Cousin Joe.
She's babysitting.
We babysitting.
Dan. We have to, yeah. Ashley and Wayne. How would I say? They live right by the bar, the bar that Bill Cannon. They bought Tony Nelson's place. Who they bought that from Marty's. Oh, oh, across the street from Karen. Yeah, Marty Jones parents' place.
Without the uh.
Home or whatever. Right by the church hospital. Yeah.
Really think you're going.
Yeah, there is. Scott Cooney and his wife.
Yeah, yeah.
They live in the corner, right?
Where um.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
I think they're in Hammond's mom with.
Yeah.
Yeah. Otherwise, yeah, just. What not? How many hours of the great night? Today was nine four. This is what nine four is for. Some days it's eight again. Nine.
Nine.
Is that a job that you know? Yeah, she's a cool little baby. You know, they from Maryland. They have no grandpa, grandma's out there, no family. I seen your daughter.
I can just jump right and do that. Yeah, you bet.
So um.
Yeah. They, I've just kept mine up because it's easier to keep it up than it is to retake it now. So I've just kept it up, so. I don't have the hazard anymore. I let that go. I have the hazard.
Scared of everybody, even kids. Not anymore, though. Too much balance.
I don't have one bite.
I'm gonna have a cookie tonight, too.
Is Mr. James here for the discussion? Didn't bring it up just now.
Yeah.
Maybe he doesn't know.
If I had emailed him on.
About what?
About the.
Oh, right. That was the reason.
Oh, I know. And that wouldn't be the purpose of it.
Yeah, you already looked at it too.
The purpose of it is just the main.
And it had the five percent.
Yeah, had included that five percent.
But it included the five percent for the off sale.
I don't understand the whole why a one mile. Gives them the.
Sorry, what was that?
Flating and. Or vice versa, you know, that makes no sense.
Because of the development.
Okay.
Subdividing, fighting, all in this subdivision. And, you know, then stated period of all this could have been the problem that we're going to be getting from.
Right.
Well, just the idea of planning is just for ability.
Right.
Can't do one without the other.
But you could plot with no going.
Oh, gosh, I didn't give them napkin. There's napkins.
You don't take these kind of cookies and sell them in the wonderful way you're thinking from the soft one. What it does is makes the mouth sort of.
Sure.
It's coming.
Oh. I'm still having a hard time. Just saying it's November. I mean, you know.
Although this one seems like it's been long. Oh.
We kind of get Chris dinner out of deck.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Did you, you know, ask us about that five years to the off sale or something?
Mm-hmm, I've been on them. I've had them. Well, not gonna be this year. It's supposed to cool down on those days.
One hundred and eighty. Yeah.
We just keep piling on.
Why?
But we're gonna be taking the cap of school.
Oh, yeah. I don't. I don't mind piling it on somebody else. So what the what the bill's gonna look like, I'm sure it'll be pretty.
It's a million, I told you fifty dollars, so unfortunately, the blend is happening. You'll provide the payments, but this year's is. Maybe we'll cut. You can come if you're missing out Saturday, up one. The table with all of this stuff.
So the back truck operator proposal is that where is, I don't see it as a package.
I'm gonna have to redo it.
So based on Scott's habits, I'm doing some tuning.
Ocean table.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. And I think customer to kind of get that out.
I don't think we ever got.
Yeah, that's true.
The what? I think so, yeah. Yeah.
He's got enough to do.
Well, yeah.
I think he got that. The table on that. Next meeting. To do this.
Let me go make sure that the tanks are all green and stuff.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He's the operator. Yep, I got, I got the book though. Go, yeah. Go through it and make it, turn it into an actual. Couple of pages rather than a binder that's that thick. Now, the, there's a, like, it's got the recirculation that they never use, but I'll figure out. Then figure out how to hook this motion.
Get the door, everything.
Yeah, alright.
In the parade, blowing snow.
Mm-hmm.
Driving it through, it's for the parade. Not me.
Someone was running there for the parade.
What?
Are we doing anything for the parade? We get an idea.
Yeah, everybody's close to him.
I think we do let us know, let us know that we use our snow machine. All original.
Be some legal questions and we will potentially have machines blasting, creating snow all coming down.
Alright. Uh eight oh three, so let's reconvene the meeting. So on public works. Uh item A, streets, street light repairs and water and sewer department updates. So Aaron, would you like to come in on streets being the sole member of the streets committee?
No, no doubt.
McDonald is on there now?
I was on there.
Oh, okay. Good.
It keeps me in line.
He just.
Yeah, um, nothing, nothing recent. Um. Gonna be going out, got some volunteers lined up, gonna go out, make sure we get the rip rap that's down. Covered over with road base, so sealed before winter, before the clouds did it and everything. Um notice. Uh given notice on some potholes developing on Marie Street. I've got to be dealt with um all those potholes um. Yes, you call it North Maine. Um they've got to be rip wrapped and then road base. Um but uh. Now that things are calming down and I've got some volunteers lined up, that'll be high priority. Um. I've talked to Chuck though, um. I want to start, really start putting together a plan for doing some work on the ditches and the drainage issues. Um and he's, it'll probably be Chuck who's the excavator operator and. Able to do so that we have on call. And hopefully use some of the remaining street budget for the year to get some of that done. I figure if we gabble in the budget, we could spend it. And it's probably a really good way to do it.
Okay.
Not good enough.
Don't let anybody else know we got money.
Work orders on some of these potholes there. Not to the point where there's all windows waiting now. Uh this marine did not. Down at all, just kind of. Do uh. Search this hole now, checking out. I got to stop that. And then I do a little research on some type of oil to mix with this matching stuff. There's an actual oil that you use for to reactivate milling, but I think it would also. Keep having more than one kind and probably can use it on the uh. Road base to the ceiling. Quick to the potholes would get water repellent next to it. Uh I'm assuming you want me to continue?
Uh yes, street light repairs, please.
Okay, um. Street light, um. They've been notified and they're they're clipping them one at a time, getting them a long way. Um. Like I mentioned at the meeting before, I do have one of the large. Uh interstate lights in Stock yet. And um. So I'm assuming that. Uh some of the street light business is going to, I don't know where the Christmas tree stuff comes into play, but. I don't think I'm gonna have to talk about that. So. Um. Water consumption is down quite a bit. Um. And I'm assuming that everybody is pretty much. Aware of the fact that Jeff number two is over on board. Uh I've been a little short handed on some of this. Stuff getting done. I did make uh on the sewer side of this. Um I did make contact with Gary Alberts. He is with on the supply. He lost his right manha- uh raised hand man after seventeen years. Walked away. So I told him he needs to come down and familiarize himself with these lift stations and. Uh the pump station and that stuff. So that we have a backup. Um I've been doing it for years and years and. Burgers and lifts and all that stuff. Uh they did do that and I didn't like their prices and. Couldn't get them when you wanted them. Uh so, but anyway. Um he is gonna come down and meet with me and I found it was important that we go over these lift stations where they are. The workings of them so that he's not blindsided if he gets called in to make a repair. The one uh on Manning Street. Uh with me. Number one off the jam. And there's only one person on that. So I have not had the opportunity to pull that off yet. See what may or may not be in it.
This happened just a little while ago, didn't it? Wasn't very long ago.
Same deal. There's it, obviously a backup pump in there. But it needs to be addressed. So late before it gets cold. Um that lid has a three-way. Lifting hooks. Oh, it kind of hard to do with just regular chains. So it kind of hard to do with just regular chains. Um, I was thinking of pulling it like there to make up a lifting apparatus for that specific lid. And then. Just hang them on the control box panel there so that they're readily available for whoever holds them and works on the stuff. So that's, um, Anthony kind of touched on the deal with the. Transformation, whatever we're waiting for, it's a balloon, um. I did get some parts in for weed situation over there. I'm thinking I'm probably gonna have to commandeering some service, you know. Maybe do some control burning over there. We burned it down before and it just don't burn again. You gotta stay right with them with the torch.
Torch.
And of course, that's very hard on propane, you know, you're doing a twenty pound bottle in an hour and a half.
Especially now it's going down.
To put them all, and that's really the best way because then you don't have. No rubbish to deal with and pile and burn later and. So as soon as I get my head above water, then I'm gonna. Attempt to work on the weeds over there. Um. I think that's, um. Probably in on the. I can probably. Work Aaron in a little bit into the pump house down there too, uh, as we were talking about. And John involved down there a little bit too. But he doesn't live here, oh, I mean, to be able to monitor that every day is gonna be difficult for them to do. Oh, I'm gonna be running along with everything down there. The diagrams are changed and on the injection obwool changed on the chlorination, that comes out. We can get another hand, another guy.
Mm-hmm.
So. That's kind of the end of that, um.
Did you volunteer? Or you just didn't appoint it?
I see.
Open work orders, we're still hammering along on the, we got, um. One of the readers down in the west pasture over there, or. John in Lawrence pasture.
Mm-hmm.
We still need to. Throw the hole in there and move that control. And we can look at the, the others already been hanging for a little bit. Um. The streets are not, we didn't get a real good explanation on that contract. Or did you explain that good, or how did that come about?
Well, it was, it was pushed to today and I spent some time, uh, over the weekend with Dan going over that and putting the information into the computer, so. I'm about half time with it now, so we'll have to pick it up on the next time. And it's, it's basically to, uh, illustrate, um, the work that was done for that and, um, just to. If we can make sure we settle up after that. You know, but the, the total amount will be what we agreed to in the motion, but it's, it just looks like he did.
Twenty seven fifty.
Yeah, something like that.
Anyway. Uh, moving on. Well, the protocol for, for working on utilities. Most generally, everybody has been notified, um. The, the one particular incident that we're talking about is, was the flushing. Uh, of that daylight, oh, no. Manning Street. And. You know, and there was four hundred and some feet of line that had to be charged and. Uh, held for overnight for the chloration process and badly flushed. So all that sort of, if you're gonna come in and play. Um. The next thing is a tractor truck. Operator, I guess we have a C D L. So I think it's kind of important that, uh, we get the guy down. From, you know, city to, I'm not sure, I'm very familiar with the truck myself, um. Operation, I'm thinking whether it's for any of those works or something that. You know, we could, um, flush some culvers or do something to get the hang of the way that they were. We have quite a few culvers around town that need to be flushed and stuff, so it's really good practice running that truck, um. Um. Think that, yeah, we got, um. Discussion of, uh, the media reader and possibly some other chores, uh, that would fall under. Um, someone. Media are being read by the hour now, now we're entertaining the fact of getting. Uh, another person to read, haven't really had any. Big jakers, uh, volunteers.
I have six applications.
Okay.
I have six applications.
Good. But we can kind of. Interviewing to.
Let me, my, this was.
Throw the reader at us right away or?
Yeah, so, so it's possible here, I will train them, but they better be speedy at learning.
Going back to the back, you're trying to propose to do, so, um, I did talk to Anthony and it sounds like his, he's got guys there, um, with John that. Uh, could possibly be available to help do some training, that are, uh, familiar with that truck set, Greg, Anthony or?
Yeah, um, well, so the thought was you. You inspect the clean, so when you go through the sewer mains, you inspect dirty. It gives you also an inclination, what's going on, uh, if you buy restaurants or something, you see buildup or you see the evidence of surges, you see some things. The board's clean and then also period inventory of your kind of worst locations by doing that. And then the guys that are in there and cambering, seeing that, which, you know, those issues. And let's say they see a protruding tap or they see something, a cross bore or, you know, gas lines or whatever, uh, they. They know not to send their back truck or, or, yeah, the back jetter through that because it could get hung up. Or it could cause a bigger problem with a big hole, so the thought process was that, um, the folks that I was gonna have with the camera unit. Um, they could then, one of them who had seen the footage and everything and knew what they were coming up against could work with Chuck. To operate the vacuum because he just needs to help with the truck.
So we have, uh, sorry. We have, uh, tons and tons of video of everything in town. So we can reference back to some of the stuff that Anthony's talking about, uh, from the phone child. One of the things that we learned over during the time, uh, it's very crucial that you don't. Run those very, very high pressures on this. Uh, we actually have. In the inner lining off of some of this pipe, um, from too high a pressure. And, uh, so consequently, then you have exposed aggregate and then what happens there, then you get sanding and stuff, which. You end up having to back up with the back part of it and stuff because, I don't know, it's been. That's the, the beauty of the cambering is where you see these problem areas are. Then you can actually run that jetter to those actual spots. And get a little mean, more meaner with it if you have to, but it's very important that the camera. Is there and seeing what results you're getting from the jetting. I mean, to just jet it and come back without a camera, you don't know whether you had a problem or if you fixed the problem or what, there or anything, so. That's very important that the camera goes hand in hand with the jetting. So.
Yeah. Yeah, and so also I know, I mean, it's been known since before we got the truck that the vac part is not operational at this time due to that clutch issue between the. Pony motor and the vacuum pump, I mean, is that something that we should look at addressing ASAP? Because if we're jetting and we knock some stuff loose, don't we then need to vacuum it out or how does?
Actually, uh, Steve had looked at that and I think, and he'd get some parts laid all in one session.
Yeah.
So it's gonna physically have to be tore down to see what parts is actually needed.
Right, but I mean.
Indicated he would do that.
Right, but the, the point is, is to decide if we need to do that right away or do we need to do that? Can we get away with not doing that? Because if we jet and, you know, knock some stuff loose in the pipes, where does it go if we don't vacuum it out? I guess that's.
Well, I mean, set a pattern when you jet, I mean, you go against the flow. Uh, so that, and you start at the car hang and work your way upstream, so when something is knocked loose or whatever, that. It actually gets washed down as you do in sections. So unless you knock loose a big, uh, bowl roots or something like that, that could cause a problem down line. Now, this manhole over here by the honey house, uh, I had an occasion to flush that. And, uh, there's only two houses on that, past, past manhole. And the grease was, uh, believable. Uh, that's in there, so those two residents have got to be contacted. I mean, that's an eight inch pipe and it was at least four to five inches up on the sides. And that thick, it came out of just that section of PVC pipe. So there's no question where it came from, there's only two houses, all that from that point up. So that definitely has to be addressed because, uh, when we knocked all that stuff loose, it went downstream, of course, and. You know, connecting with others, uh, on the manhole inspections and that, that stuff and. The one that's by, by Dan's house there, it needs to be opened and make sure this stuff. Pass through, well, I'm coming to, uh, actually where the Ferguson lift is. That actually gives it a pretty terrible amount there because of those pumps, they're putting out quite a bit of volume and pressure and stuff to. Keep things running smoothly from there on to the, we're going.
Um, and then also too, so we did want to have a discussion on the, uh, Public Works employees, so, you know, as we know that. Your helper is no longer, uh, employed with you, so, uh, I mean. The idea was floated that the town hires a guy to, to help you with that, or, I mean, or do you have a?
Somebody to read me, or, oh, we've got six apparently. Uh, that person could probably do some other monitoring if they're in, you know, I mean. He could have more than one job to do, I mean. Uh, three of the downstairs and then three of the meters and hopefully they shovel this whole chair or whatever, maybe. There's things that could happen with that, that person.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, uh, so we have, for that one in particular, we have six applicants and we have a defined job description already for that one that they applied to, so. I guess if we're going to go that route, we'd have to check with them and see if they're okay with any, uh, additional duties, but there is other stuff too that he was doing for you, like, uh. Uh, when you're operating your equipment, he was a spotter and things like that, and then, you know, getting down in the ditch and doing all those type of things.
I've got a couple other guys that are kind of interested in, in ditch man and that kind of stuff, you know.
Eric, did you raise your hand again?
Yeah, so. Not yet.
You know, I couldn't work any more than just. People always just want to apply and, you know.
Yeah, so, um, I guess, based on your experience. What's kind of the average number of hours per week that you would require for a helper? You know, do you know that offhand or?
Well, you know, it depends on how much you assign them to do, you know, I mean, you could probably get by with. Ten to twenty hours a week. You know, it depends on whether you're going to employ him to do other jobs and just what's being done. How you like to spell removal, that stuff's done by the hour, so it isn't necessary to try to figure out. What the pay is or not pay or changing the contract. My contract is, is up, uh, December thirty first. So you and I have discussed it a little bit about, you know, what needs to be led into that contract at this time. After fifty-two years, I'm getting contacted.
Yep.
I'm putting out fires from the town.
Aaron, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, yes, I kind of threw this on the agenda after talking a little bit with folks and the water meter thing, I think one of the holdbacks on the water meter thing is it's only. X numbers a month, you know, it's a hard thing to do, but we do have that, we have lawn care where, and, I mean. The situation being what it is, Chuck still needs, Chuck needs a new helper, so does Chuck find a helper? Or do we find a helper, a, a laborer for the town and X number of issues? He basically answers to Chuck.
Our hours, I mean, some of these guys are not going to get well with. Ten hours in a week, you know, they're probably expecting to get a little more money than, you know, their employees.
Right, yeah, we would, we would essentially need to.
Well, I mean.
Position.
Right, and so the, my, I know you and I kind of talked about this offline too and we talked about it with others too and kind of the idea is, is the look ahead. Because we're gonna be coming into a season where there's gonna be a lot more things to be, to do, like removal for one, but then, uh. You know, I mean, in the event that Chuck's not able to find a helper, I mean, can we provide that help on our side and then he, like you said, answers to Chuck or, you know, we're just trying to kind of. Think ahead and, and get ahead of any, uh, issues so we don't have to try and scramble at the last minute in order to, um. You know, uh. Help make sure that, that whatever work needs, uh, done gets done, and I know I, uh, talked to Anthony too. And he does have some guys, uh, with, uh, John Burkhart and things that could possibly help fill in, I don't know if we'd have to have a, a more defined relationship. Uh, with that, um, you know, if there's like a, a retainer or something like that, or we could just go strict hourly, I mean. You know, the, the issue is, is a lot of times when we have work to do here, it needs to get done right away and so, uh.
Correct.
It, it, it's hard to just. Like you say, you don't really know how many hours per week it is, so it's hard to have a guy in that position, but then if you need him right away, he's gotta be here, so it's.
Well, you know, you.
They figure out there.
Eight o'clock every morning because there could be a dam so in distress overnight or. You know, you do something in the work schedule, but that can be altered. By eight, eight-thirty every morning, if something that someone needs, uh, you know, needs to be turned off, emergency. Situation or non-payment or something that takes precedence over, you know, like, then. My days get screwed up every day.
You know. So, uh, it, it's just, um, just something to think about and if we need to do some more research on this or more discussion on this, we can have a work session this Thursday on it, um.
We're gonna interview some of these people and see what their thoughts are, do, you know, what they're expecting.
Which people are those?
I wanted to just take, so they're interesting.
Yeah.
We have a date on that though, and the ending date on that is.
The twenty-first.
The twenty-first, oh, tomorrow already?
The Friday.
Friday.
Well, if, if we wanted to. We wanted to ask them if. They wanted to take on some extra things, I guess we'd have to make, first find out what that list of things was. Then the. Then the expected time per week that it would require to do those things. And, and we can, um, include that in the interview process as well. Um, we just, if that's what we're going to do, I think we'd have to approach it in a similar fashion. So, um, I mean, you guys have any thoughts on that or?
So what does, what, what, what was the job description that they're answering to?
It's for water, just water. Ten to fifteen hours a month. Ten to fifteen hours per month. And meters are read around the twentieth, regardless of the weather. Six currently being compensated at sixteen fifty hour, subject to board approval.
Will you all remember?
No.
So what do you guys think? Should we do, uh, a work session on this to try and flesh out things or kind of let things sit for a minute and see where we end up?
Well, it's gonna take a little time to put this together, you know. All these people, if they're older people or don't, uh, well, depending on ten hours a month, that's ridiculous. I mean, who works at ten hours?
Pocket change. You know, that's how I always looked at it. It was. What's that?
Oh, I work Thursdays.
Kept, kept by my husband. I mean, you know.
Well, so.
Mark?
Did you apply?
Yeah, I, uh, no. If the town was gonna hire somebody, I, I, I'm gonna do that unless you say you're gonna work forty hours a week.
Right.
These are the kind of things, because somebody could have me on call for emergencies and that. So I think the town, I mean, the board needs to decide. Can we hire somebody full time or close? And do we have enough tasks that can keep them busy when there isn't? Oh, a water emergency or, or lawn care and how much does Chuck still want to do until, you know? It, it's got a, I don't think it pays to hire somebody and just, well, we'll call you when we need you.
Well, people don't like to work on most kinds of contingencies.
No, it, it, there's no incentive. But if there's, if there's enough stuff around town, keep somebody busy and kind of start training in on some of this other stuff and getting some, then I think it makes, it makes sense.
So do y'all want to discuss this on next Tuesday?
I, I think that we need a, some sort of a work session to, to put this together better.
Like on just this too, like.
Yeah.
Probably just.
Yeah.
Well, on that time, we can also discuss. I have come in kind of direct here to move on how much. You know, I have done for year by year and I have done for two years, uh, you know, what involves her, you know? And the guy that Anthony had lined up and I'm like, ball for that kind of. Turning me.
What are your guys thinking? The guys that you kind of have in line possibly for this job, are they thinking a full-time job or what, what is?
I don't know. So there, so there were operations contracts that we've had since July. Uh, I didn't bring them to this agenda because there's things missing, like locates. Um, there are other things that you guys wanted to have looked at in the operations contracts. So, um, I do have that stuff. The locates is a big, bigger discussion because we have things that don't have any trace to wire. There's other towns that have that, Hill City and Apple Springs have them. Um, and so I'm trying to find a comprehensive solution where I can afford the equipment. And I've gotten actually stuff on GPR today and called back to somebody I knew that sells it, rents it. And we actually got a owns it and would come out and do something for us. That's an easy, cheap way to do it. He'd get three cities and he was just here in South Dakota. And he's from Ohio. So it's like, uh, that's coincident. Like that would then tell me, okay, that equipment, that GPR equipment works pretty good out here because the soil types and everything, uh, are dependent. And then we can figure out the areas where we don't know where water main is, for example. Uh, Hill City has three major areas where they don't know where it's at. Um, and, uh, and so that was a part of the locates. And just even if it isn't, I'm locating every time. But, you know, it's a part of the strategy of upgrading our asset management software. So that those lines that you see on the map, you can rely on those. We can convert them into a, uh, stakeout file. And then have a handheld that stakes up to that. So you have actual tools for people locating. Uh, so that was the only thing that I was trying to somehow incorporate. Uh, and it'd be on a T N A basis. Uh, but I've got a rate structure. It's in our, it's in the packets. And so I do have a general labor, uh, rate. Now, when I build them up, I build them up with a multiplier. So what I, what I pay him is half what I give up. So you put on a multiplier, but I cover his working confidence, ability and all that. So, you know, it will be on a as needed basis. And it would kind of spring from that operations contract. And to do services like services on a pump station or services, you need, you need, you need a lift truck. You need something that can actually do that work, right? And so in those cases, I mean, yeah, I know Gary from Farmer Supply, and I know he does a lot of work with wells. That's good. I have other suppliers too, other than Gary. Uh, you, what I had suggested long ago is when it comes to things like that, that we have, that we do in our, then on a few, on call, and we get these people to the, uh, reply to that. And we don't pick one, we, we rank them in the list. And that way, we call Gary, okay, Gary's busy out in Gloucester. We call Albert, okay, Albert's available, but he'll be here in four hours. He's in Hot Springs, you know what I mean? Go down the list till we have the person that can come and, and react fast enough. But you already got those people lined up and they know they're basically on call because they got specialized equipment. We gotta pull a pump, you gotta get a rig out there to pull that pump out of the well. So, you know, those are the ways to get prepared, um, to somebody that accompany that person. That would be, that could be a general labor that accompanies that contractor after you get things done. And so then you would all part from that. And I can do that now that I'm now a bench. Wasn't allowed to do that before.
Okay, yeah, I mean, uh, so it looks like we do have a, a few different options to choose from. And, uh, and so for the work session, are you guys okay with next Tuesday, the twenty fifth?
If, if you need me here, I will be here next week.
Tuesday.
All right. What's that?
Tuesday.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, well, um, if we do have any questions for you, I'll just would have been to email and then I guess you can answer them when you have some time. Don't answer them when you're in Florida though, until you get back. So.
Don't send them until he comes back. That'd be an easy one.
Yeah, right.
All right.
So what time are you thinking? Four, four thirty, five?
How about five? Is everyone okay with five? Get in there a little earlier. And I do think that as Chuck mentioned, th- there's gonna be some the, your new contract for next year is going to be closely tied with this discussion. So, you know, I do think it would be, uh, great if you could attend to Chuck in, in, uh, you know, we have to figure out kind of exactly what we're looking at as far as tasks and everything and try to kind of go through it in a methodical way to kind of get a good picture for, you know, what are we gonna need going forward? So.
Well, one of the other things is to, I have the equipment.
Yeah.
I mean, it isn't like the guy will rent something or, you know, I, I got to put them to do everything except pull that well, lay it on the feet down there and, and, um, there's several well people and, you know, um, I wish you thought I was full of that all many times over the years. I'm just looking at mostly the backup and stuff when I'm not here because I'm worried about it when I'm here.
When you're drinking Mai Tais on the beach.
Right.
Yes.
Pools in the sand.
With your, yeah.
So you're in five o'clock next Tuesday?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I can be available by phone.
Okay, well, uh, we'll call you, uh, we do need you.
Take the time off. We'll put everything in a list.
I'll mark it down.
If, if, if I, if something happens that we really need you, we will put emergency, please reply now.
All right, um, so that's good. So we'll see everybody next Tuesday at five and we'll go over this, uh, public works discussion. So we don't have anything listed for economic development. Do you have any quick updates or anything in there?
Um, nothing, nothing in concrete enough to bring up right now, but.
All right. Okay, very good then. Uh, so on to claims. Let's check them out here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Anthony.
There is, uh, one on there to Northwest, right? That's for, uh, a curb job tool on why you take that back.
Oh, really?
Ninety-three eighty-seven? Okay.
There goes back.
All right. I would make a motion to, uh, accept the claims other than Northwest Pipe Fittings Incorporated for the combination key of the amount of ninety-three eighty-seven.
I second that.
Okay, you make some motion. One second. We have any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion carries on the finance office. That's you, Terry.
The monthly financials, we had those last meeting and I'll have them for the beginning of next one. Um, for department updates, I did tell them that, you know, we do have, like I said, we have the six application for the meter reader position and I also have ten for the admin position. So.
Oh, my.
Uh, we need to probably think about when we want to do interviews and who wants to be involved in those. And I did have them both advertised that we accept applications until this Friday, the twenty first. Thinking about that. The other thing, I did get an email from Ben Elliott today. He's supposed to be doing our one-year audit. Of course, now it's November and he said he planned on doing it in December, but then he's wondering if maybe we wouldn't want to wait and do a two-year audit. And he had quoted six thousand for the one year and he would do a two-year for nine thousand.
When? What date?
Well, he's gonna, he said January or February, which is probably more like. If I may, but.
So we could offer him a contract to do a two-year for nine thousand dollars in January. And end it right there. If he can make it work in January, I really, I mean, it disappoints me. We wanted him to do this all year long and it hasn't been done. And so I think we need to light a fire underneath that and get it done. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. What do y'all think about that?
It sounds like we need to do a little portion.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's, uh, so you want to make that mo- motion, Linda?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Donna seconds, um, two years audit for nine thousand in January. Okay, uh.
Is that gonna work? What Terry would get me?
Figure out the year end stuff. Doing the year end stuff is kind of, but we do it maybe later in January.
He does it later.
I mean, I, I don't know what he'll done.
Okay. I know that we, when we talked about this last time, we wanted to do yearly audits, right? And we had this guy picked out because he had done all this force in the past.
And he's a lot cheaper than. But he's getting up there. Been doing this for a lot of years. I don't know how much longer he's gonna do it.
I see. Do we need to look at somebody else then at some point or?
Oh, yeah.
Come next time, I'd say.
Yeah.
Okay, Joan, did you have a?
I don't know, we actually had the same question Donna did with all the hearing requirements I wanted to. Terry was wanting it that soon.
Training somebody.
Yeah, and then having a new employee to them, I could have drinking it, you know.
Well, I, I dropped that back to February, but, I mean, it, everything should be already done for the previous year. So, um, and.
I'd be more comfortable in February than with you.
All right, I'll, I'll drop it back to February.
Okay, so, um, I'll make the motion to amend to, uh, set the audit deadline for, shall we say, February fifteenth? Is that okay, Terry?
Sure.
Does anyone wanna?
I'll second that.
Second that amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. So original motion is amended to, um, to your audit nine thousand um, by Jan, February fifteenth. Any further discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Okay, very good. Um, so.
So then we have the C D that we pulled the funds from First National. Um, and I had looked at some other banks, but we, we talked about reinvesting that for maybe a six-month period. Um, currently Bank West has an eight-month for three point six five. And then First National where we had, it has a six-month for three point seven five. And I would recommend go with either one of those because they're going to require less paperwork. We go with the new bank. They want our E I N and they want our articles of incorporation and all this. I mean, for, for less than a percent, I don't think it's worth it. So.
Okay, do you have a preference on which one?
Well, the First National is three point seven five and it's six months. Bank West is three point six five, but it's eight months. And I didn't think we wanted to go any longer than six months. But that's what Anthony had.
Yeah, we better stick with the six months because we're already a month past when we first talked about it too. So.
Okay.
My motion would be to, um.
And I will say, um, in talking to the bank, they, so in the motion, they would like, you know, that we're moving it and they would love, also like to state who's going to be signers on the account.
Okay. So quote all that and. You are the signer and, yeah.
And, yeah, okay.
So we have a motion to approve the reinvestment of C D funds and it's, uh, Bank West.
It'll be at First National.
Sorry.
Where we have it, yeah.
First National for six months at three point seven five.
Yeah.
And, uh, Terry and I will be signers.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion, uh, if you have a second.
A second.
A second, okay. Do you have any further discussion on that one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion carries.
And the next one was one that was dependent from last time. I did do a little more research on the changing our internet and phone to midco. Changing our internet and phone to midco and so there is a. Some costing your, um, packets. But currently they pay sixty-nine-five for our internet and then. Our phone is listed there. There's, we have the main line, the second line and then a fax and then we have seven cents long distance. And I think I had Cal and Erin both look at this about which ones they've been recommended. Midco. So they do have kind of like contracts, twelve-month, twenty-four, thirty-six. She said if we do want to go month-to-month, it would be the twelve-month. And I think Erin has adjusted. The two-hundred megabyte at a hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, or twenty-four month if we wanna. But that's.
Their long distance is five cents a minute. So it's a little cheaper.
So what do you, what did they consider long distance?
Anything to make a long-distance call. It's not like. wider area.
Okay.
Not ours on our area. Not like yourself. Like mobile.
If you call my, uh, cell phone from here, then that's only one distance call. Not a six-oh-five.
Wow.
It's weird.
Yeah, that's.
All right.
My name is.
I guess I'll just call you then. How about that?
There you go.
I mean, if we go to internet, we could look at Google instead. Internet-based phone, you'd just be like, all right, well, regardless, that's really, we're just gonna. Use that two-hundred bytes as our phone. Uh, not necessarily right now, but that's something to look into.
That's gotta have another little cost to it too, right?
Yeah, probably flat rate. Something flat rate.
Yeah, and there's gotta be some business, um. Targeted ones too that are gonna be, you know, extra. Extra reliable and things like that. Yeah. I think two-hundred megabytes enough.
Yeah, I think so. I mean.
Make a bit. Cause we're not streaming right now. We just recorded the computer and then upload.
Right, yeah, we're not streaming yet, but two-hundred bytes, plenty of the streaming, ten, ten eighty B.
Oh, really?
Do it, but no problem for ninety D P, yeah, no problem at all. We could. We could stream. Okay, two-hundred bytes, yeah.
And we're not ready to, to do that anyway. We need to upgrade the computer to do that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, and then it looks like if we go with them. Uh, you want to do the twenty-four months, so then that'd be the one-twenty-five plus the twenty-five for the phone, then five cents a minute. Long distance.
Do you have any reason not to go three mo- uh, three years? I just thought, figure in the middle, but it doesn't really matter to me. Save ten dollars, spend the tax.
Cool.
I mean, it would be saving, it'd be fifteen between the phone, the internet and the phone.
But adding to how many months, how much they can save.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know that it's. Makes a difference if we go thirty-six or twenty.
So what hap- what is the cost if we break the contract?
I, I don't know. We'll see if you like them first.
Yeah.
I, I infer as I'm.
Well, that, that I understand.
They're, they're fine.
Okay, so maybe we should go month-to-month until we have decided that they're sufficient for our uses.
For the word.
All right. I like that.
Do six of form of checks, that's a twelve and.
Yeah, it's probably pretty, um, inconsequential to update that to a longer term, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess I'll make the motion that we go with, uh, fifty-hundred gigabit internet speed at the twelve-month slab price. Yep, so. I'll second that. Aaron, seconds, do we have any further discussion on that one? Joan?
Um, just a quick question. Then you were talking about Rushmore job and you have your price for a main line and a second line. So when you're talking a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is that for one line? Are you gonna double that for your second?
Well, that's, that's the internet.
So it does.
That's. Internet is one line. Yeah, that's the internet. Then the phone is. It's like thirty dollars a month.
So per line.
Oh, the same as the dots, I see. Thank you.
Yeah. Confusing to end.
So then we get one phone line and one fax. So would we need a second phone line?
We would.
So then that would be another third as well.
Yep, yep, but right now we're paying.
So this will go down to the.
Right, sixty each.
This will go downstairs too.
Wow.
Yeah, and then we have, oh yeah, and then also the applied to the marshals. We just got his. Similar parts.
Okay.
Wait, we paid for all this for a month just for phone? Nitties?
Yep, because we have, for the, we have our main line, our second line and our fax.
So once, it's all gonna pencil out and follow the lines and internet or.
Yep.
For probably by time speed.
Yep. Okay.
And are we having a real phone downstairs?
Um, Eric said he was getting a phone, so he's got a phone number down there. They, they installed the line.
Okay, good.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I need to give that phone number to you guys. He didn't have phone, that's okay.
Okay, do we have, uh, any more discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Uh, motion carries. And then, uh, next one? The town.
Okay, so then I just thought, cause next week is Thanksgiving and I know after. You gave us the option to close the office on Friday and use a vacation day for that and I'd be willing to do that. If we can close.
I think we should close at our end.
I'd make a, a motion to approve the closure of the town office on November twenty-eighth.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, um, Trina, did you wanna?
In last year, you also paid, gave pay for that holiday, I thought.
No, I think they did it Christmas, but I found the minutes in the package and they. We, we use vacation, but Christmas, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Very good.
Thank you.
So on to old business. Yes, ma'am.
I, I think we should tie down some dates to. Um, try to get interviews done. I would hate to wait until the last meeting, the next meeting to get this. Started when we need somebody. So, um, with the. Applications, resumes, all being in by the twenty-first. And then it being. Maybe at the. I, I know we try to keep our work sessions down to one or two items, but. Maybe we could discuss. Which one should be interviewed at, at the meeting on the twenty-fifth?
On the work session?
On the work session. And then set, try to set up interviews for the first week in December.
Yeah, I was gonna, I wonder if that's, uh, the right venue to discuss, uh. Possible personal information and stuff like that.
Like who we're being, I think we do that.
Think we haven't been an executive before, right?
Mr. James? Uh, scheduling who, what the applications we received, choosing which ones to move forward to, is that an executive session thing?
Yeah, you're sort of my hiring decisions.
Yeah, we could convert to sexual.
Um. I suppose, yeah, you wanted to do that, convert to a special meeting and then. Do the executive session, um, after we do the discussion on the, uh, public works.
Okay, I'm, I'm all right with that.
And then that way we just, we don't have to put anyone out to wait for us again.
We don't have to charge two meeting costs too.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, so this is now a special meeting. Very good. Yeah, thanks.
Thank, thank you.
Public Works slash. Six session. Hiring. Okay. Very good. So on to appointment of vacant trustee position. So. I know last time we're kind of at a deadlock with deciding on who we would like to see in the vacant position. And, um. I don't know that we have to go through the whole thing again unless there's somebody that thinks they want to change the way that they voted last time. I mean, if. Uh, Linda?
I have some comments to make. Um. Before that discussion, if it's all right. Um. I think that, um. Uh. How much is, how much would a special election be, Terry?
That's, that's the next item on the agenda.
Well, I know, but I want to know the, I want to know the. Cost.
So there's two publications you have to do.
That's in the back here, right?
Um, I don't think so. I thought you were gonna do it. Um, so basically there's, there's two publications that I had, um, we went back and kind of looked at. So that would roughly cost. Me on the high end, a hundred bucks for the, you've got to run a meeting to.
Two publications at a hundred dollars.
For each run two weeks.
Okay.
Um, and then you have the cost of your election workers, which you would need three. And then they would work.
Twelve hours a day, or actually, yeah, thirteen hours a day.
And then. I mean, my question, then, I don't know if we can use those same people then to count the ballots. At the end. I mean, so you gotta figure, cause you gotta canvas of both, that, you know, count them. And do all that, so that's gonna take a little bit. So you just figure, and the election workers pay a cent of fifteen bucks an hour, so. So we need times, I don't know, what did we figure sixteen hours would be high, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's like seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars, I think. What I figured.
I, I, I fall apart to high into twelve-hundred total. Part of it would come from this year, part of it at the next year's budget.
Yeah, and that's the other thing. It's like a sixty-day window to set these elections.
So even if we at the next meeting, flat decided that we were gonna do this, it would be sixty days later, which would make it February.
So I have the dates, um, thank my memory, I have the dates. If we approved it today. It would, um, publish the twenty-sixth. It would be in the paper, um, has to be at least sixty days out, which means the earliest Tuesday would be January twenty-seventh. Um, statute and Scott can double check it if you wouldn't mind, um. Election has to be, special election has to be ninety days, at least ninety days before a regular election. So that's kind of, it would be a hundred and twenty-six days. So we're clear on everything statute, as far as I can tell, but.
So basically what you're saying, it's gonna cost the town twelve-hundred dollars to have an election for a person that would be in office for four months.
Uh, when, that's not, so it would fill the seat and against that, if you wouldn't, if you could double check, it would fill the actual term. So it'll fill the duration of the term. Because it's an actual election, not a, uh, appointment.
Yeah, there, there's a difference in statute, um. If you appoint, then they serve until the next election.
Correct.
If, if the special election is held, it's the remainder of the year.
And how much is the remain? Twenty-seven months?
Until twenty-twenty-seven.
Till twenty-twenty-seven.
So they turn a year.
So a year.
Few years.
A year and four months, that person would hold that, that seat. When we have someone that's willing to do it. Without costing the town the twelve-hundred dollars for four months.
But you have two people that are willing to do it.
Yes, we have two people still that we could vote on. Um, one is not here tonight. Um. My point is that, that, so let's put it right out there. Trina has put in for this position before. Her intent is solid. And whether she's.
Well.
It's only her, it's her decision on whether she thinks she's strong enough to handle the board. And she's been here often enough and seen. Let's just say the crap that has gone on. On this board and she's still willing. To put her name forward for this. And that being said, so was the other gal, no, no doubt about it. She's seen the stuff too. I think that for a four-month position. That would cost the town twelve-hundred dollars. When we're gonna have an election next June anyway. I mean, it's gonna, we're gonna have it next June. It's, it's not up for discussion whether she runs or we give her the appointment or not. So, so that's already money that we're already spending. Uh, there, there's no extra cost to the town for that. And my feeling is that. There's no guarantee. I don't care if it's the other person or any person sitting in this room that would take this position. Um. There's no guarantee they're gonna be here for the five or four, five, six months anyway. I mean, any one of us can. Get hit by a truck or quit because we have medical problems. This is a savings to the town for twelve-hundred dollars. On a position. That we have. Notoriously. Appointed rather than having a, a. Special election for. And for four months. And she doesn't have to run if she really doesn't like it. Any of them, any of you, any, if you, you can quit. I mean, I could quit today if I wanted. So could you, 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 any of us. I, I think this is. Twelve-hundred dollars isn't much. But, but you ask anybody on twelve-hundred dollars. Worth of gravel for their road and they're gonna love it. They want that gravel. They want that. Blade run through there, whatever, so there's no potholes or no. Washboards or whatever.
Yeah.
I think that, that this is a, I, I would ask. That we have a vote on this and. And fill this position without the extra cost and time and work for our finance officer. When she's just.
Had a good speech, go on.
Well, you know, she's the one that delayed. She wanted our audit delayed by a month because of time. So here we go. This is in the same time period. Just saying. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, uh, so. I mean, what I was getting at is if anybody thinks that they want to change the way that they voted at the last meeting, since we were two-to-two deadlock and. I think it would make sense to have the vote, um, if no, if everybody. Is sure that they are gonna vote the same way that they did, then it, I don't see that it's, uh. A good use of our time because we already have the results of that. Um, Trina, did you have a discussion point?
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm sitting right here and I am, I'm willing to answer any questions or concerns. I'm not sure. What the questions or concerns are, because nobody's, um, asked me, but, um. Um, you know, I. I mean, I know I come to this meeting and I have a lot of questions and some of them are good questions and some of them are ridiculous questions and that. They're that way because I just come in and I've just got the packet and I'm like, oh, what's going on? Where you guys have been in the process and that's all I'm asking for is the opportunity to be in the process, in the discussion, so that I can have better questions and I can make better decisions. I don't think I'm, uh. A controversial person necessarily, but obviously I am, but I would ask that you guys consider changing your vote so that I can have that opportunity to be more involved and.
So I guess I have one question for you. Are you a person that gives your own mind or can you be swayed by somebody individually?
I. I am not a people pleaser. If you hadn't noticed, I try to do my research even with this discussion, right? I'm asking chat G P T, what is this legislation? What's this say about special elections? I'm trying to figure it out. So I, no, I'm not interested in being swayed. I'm interested in knowing what's best for the town.
Can you speak for yourself? Are you going to be? A one-man person?
I don't listen to what. People are saying around town to my benefit and to my detriment. I don't. Get into the gossip mail. I'm not interested in who voted one-way. I don't get into the gossip mail, I'm not interested in who voted one way or another. I'm interested in what is best for our future. We have a town that's growing, and it's great, and we've done a lot of good things, and I'm excited about where we're going. And I wanna keep that momentum going, so, no, I'm not interested in being swayed by, uh, Dan or, or anybody.
It's amazing that you would mention Dan, so.
We all know what you said. So.
No, I didn't have to mention, uh, mention his name, but I did, because I know that he's the only person in the, in the discussion two weeks ago that kinda said, oh. I think she's agree, so that's why I mentioned him, and I, you know, I, I could have mentioned that some other people.
Yeah, so, um, I see Aaron's hand up, I'll call on him, Mark's hand up was up a while ago, or do you still have a comment?
Right, right.
And, okay, yes, sir, so, and then I see Jones hand up, so, let's hear from them. And then, um, if you all think that you wanna change your vote, then I. Tonight, one way or another, then, then we can go through the process, um, I don't know that. If, if, if nobody thinks they wanna change their vote, I mean.
Yeah, that's right, it takes only a minute.
Um, so, yeah. This is the one decision, like, this board has made a lot of decisions, we're burdened by the people of this town to make a lot of decisions. This is one decision we shouldn't have to make unless absolutely necessary. Alright, situation comes up where it seems like it's necessary, it's still not necessary. Um, throughout the past, it's always been an appointment. We're doing different things now than we were in the past, and so far it seems to be panning out pretty well in most aspects. Um. I. Don't like the idea. Of this. Being an opportunity to. Make things personal again. Because I feel like we were getting past that, and I feel like the only way to make absolutely certain that it doesn't turn into anything personal. Is to kick it back to the people and let the people do their, do their duty as the people and choose, I just. I think that's the best way to make absolutely certain that whatever person gets appointed to that seat is the person that the citizens of Hermosa want, regardless of what we feel, cause. Ideally, this board is five individuals with five different personalities, five different perspectives. And, you know, I don't think we should be picking. The fifth. Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mark.
I. It's not a position for anybody. Was there election funds budgeted for this year?
Did we use it, yes.
You did use?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't?
We didn't have an election.
Oh, that's right, we didn't, you're right, sorry.
I just. You guaranteed that.
The money's been budgeted. It seems like it would make. Let the people decide. You have two people that, that want the position, and both would be probably good in each right, but let the people decide.
Yeah, um, so is it? Okay, Joan?
Um, I would just like you to remember all the hours that Trina has already donated to this community. Working for our community, as you have continued to do up until now, however. If you feel that it needs to go to the people, then I think it needs to go in June, not spend money on a special election. If you can work with the four member board for four months, then we got a real problem.
Hey, uh, Mr. James?
Uh, I just wanted the board to be aware that this particular statute about, um, appointing special elections actually changes on January first. The law changes, uh, it's not a big change, but I think I get, one of it is. This is if a vacancy exists on a municipal governing body, remaining members must appoint or appoint and replace them to serve until the next annual municipal election, or you may call a special election. So I think what they're saying is that you don't have an option to like, you can't just run off the clock.
Right.
Um, so, so again, it used to say shall, and they changed it to must, and maybe that. Ar- arguably, if you pass, uh, somebody could argue, if you do stick actions of board, if you hadn't complied with that, it wasn't a lawful action, so. That's, I think that's what they're trying to do with that change, but. If we're on skip pace here, we're making decisions, and maybe we're on valid, anyone on first date, but I'm just, just wanna make sure, buddy, that was a, I just called that one, I was looking at Aaron's question there.
So, uh, just to clarify then, at, at January first, then we'll either need to come to an agreement on the appointment, or we will have to do a special.
I just fixed the date.
Okay.
So, seeing as how it will take the process that long anyway, will that law, even, even if we start the process today, would that law still go into effect? It would.
I mean, yeah.
It would mean the same, yeah, okay.
I don't, it wouldn't affect a, a, a special election process that has already begun, it's just making it.
Well, the special election would already be, uh, uh, started anyway, that doesn't.
Just made the requirement.
Yeah.
To take action, more certain.
Right. And I, and for, just to let those that don't know this, um, in the past, that has happened to us before. And, um, when we called the municipal league, they said, just appoint somebody, and I said, are you nuts? You know, point twenty people doesn't mean any one of them would show up, you know, that, that's crazy, so. We did not appoint anybody because, I mean, we made phone calls, so you sure, could you be interested, would you mind, you know? And, and nobody would, nobody would take the seat, so we sat without a fourth member for quite some time, um. I wanna say that was ten years ago, it was in the timeframe of, um, Ramsey, when Ramsey was on the board, so. Um, but anyway, just to let the town know that that is, you know, that was what?
Probably longer than.
Was it longer than ten, yeah, well, okay.
Well, so, the, the item on the agenda right now is the appointment of vacant trustee. Um, I suppose, well, let's just run through it then, we'll, we'll just. Uh, get the process done and see if we have the same result, and then after that, I guess we'll figure out what we're gonna do. So, yeah, so I guess, uh, I'll go ahead and make the motion to nominate Trina for the appointment. So is there a?
I'll second that nomination.
Nomination, okay. I don't know that we need to have another discussion on it, we had a pretty good one last time, so. All those in favor of appointing Trina to the town board, uh, empty position, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Two ayes, two nays? Okay, um, do we have another nomination?
I make a nomination, except Kathy for board.
I second.
Okay. I'm gonna make some motion, Aaron, seconds. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
I guess I'll say nay there too, so, um, so we have the same result as last time. So now, um, basically, we're gonna default to item fourteen B, the motion to schedule a special election, so, um. I guess technically, we're not gonna be required to do that until January first, per, uh, Mr. James.
Uh, so, yeah, you clear that, so, so the current statute just says, it says you shall. And shall appoint, and then you may set an election, just all the changes of the word.
Shall.
Law, lawyers have a weird understanding of the word shall. And there's, there's a, there's a directory shall, and a mandatory shall, and so, because of that, I think that's why they changed the word must.
Right.
Yeah.
You can't have a shall, and then something that follows if you don't do it, is you shall do it.
Right, so, so it's, so, um, so, yeah. I, well, anyways.
So, so in order to be, to comply with statutes, then someone's gonna have to change their vote, is that what you're saying then?
No. Um, just, just that.
Are you thinking about changing?
Yeah, in, in January, there's arguments, you gotta do it enough. In large way.
Okay, and in January, are we gonna meet that timeframe when it says you cannot make it? What was that, three months before the actual?
It's ninety days.
Next election.
I did look up that too, it's ninety days before the next municipal election.
And would we make that timeframe then?
I, I, the question for the secretaries, you know, the clerks and those folks that know deadlines, I don't know those.
Yeah, and I think there's also the question too, that, so if we have a special election. Trina and or Kathy gonna want to go through that process as well, because, you know, an election requires campaigning, things like that, so. I mean, is that something that, that y'all have, uh, discussed with them or anything, I know I haven't, so.
I don't think that matters, that's their decision, not ours.
Right, I, I know, but, um, I mean, if they, if one or the other doesn't intend to do that, then we're gonna hold a special election for one person then.
Why would they have to campaign, but it won't, you know what I mean?
We wouldn't have to have the election if one does not put their name in. If only one person puts their name in, by the deadline, that person is automatically in the seat.
For the full term.
For the.
So, uh, so first is, um. Yeah, I think that we're, we're kind of going in circles, so the dates, if we were to approve today. The twenty-sixth, no, the eighteenth of November, it would publish on the twenty-sixth, which is next Wednesday. The special election must be at least. That, that publishing date must be a, at least sixty days, on or before the sixtieth day, before the election day, so. The next available Tuesday, after that sixty days, would be the twenty-seventh of January. And the regular election is.
Five months after.
In second. So a hundred and twenty-two days, so we're a hundred and twenty-two days, the special election would occur a hundred and twenty-two days before the regular election. So as far as the timeline goes, we're fine, but, well, question for Mr. James, so by that, whether you look at the current or the next, it says shall or must. So if we're in a situation where this comes up, and you could say kicks the can down the road, we almost have to keep it on the agenda every week because it's a, we're supposed to do it. But i- is there a situation where somebody could argue that you should have triggered a special election months ago?
Uh, and just again, a- after January, if, if the board, and this, this is probably based on a reasonable person's standpoint, right? Would a reasonable person believe the board was acting to fill the vacancy, who wouldn't believe that they were not, not active to do that, and they were delaying?
Mm-hmm.
That's what, you know, quote, like, to say, okay, well, you know, and you can buy it, in spirit of the statute or not, you know, I, I, I mean, it's not a precise question. It's, it's not a precise answer I can give you. So we've got feeling that a court's gonna have.
So at very least, we should be demonstrating that we are actively trying to fill the seat.
I think that would, I think that would be the best, you know, protections, actions, yes.
And as far as the twelve hundred dollars for this election, we've had things where we spent a lot more money than that, and got a lot less for it.
Oh, absolutely, but that doesn't, that's. You're absolutely correct, but it's still, like I said, twelve hundred dollars that could be spent on streets.
And, and. For the election.
All right. Let's, let's, we're, we're taking, spending a lot of time on this, I see a couple of hands out there, um, so let's just go ahead. Let's get the motion on the floor, we'll have the discussion, then we'll have the vote, and then we'll move on, so, um.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to schedule a special election for. January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six. To fill the currently vacant trustee position.
So who do you say there?
The January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-six. That's the first Tuesday, if the motion were to pass tonight, and have everything published and everything done.
You need to get that in the paper by November twenty-eighth, right?
Yeah, twenty-sixth is the.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's. I just, we can, we can.
Right, right.
That's a quick turnaround, so.
Yeah. And Terry would have to have the notice ready and given to them by Friday, five P M, yeah.
Okay, uh, so we, Trina, did you have a, something on this?
Please don't do a special election, oh goodness, look, it, Sturgis got in trouble for this, you know, they, um. It's this law, before those two words that you're talking about, it says. The, by ordinance in, enacted prior to the vacancy, you have to have this ordinance that you have. It's set up for special elections prior to the vacancy, so we've missed that opportunity. This is what Sturgis did too, they, they said, oh, we're gonna, we're, they, they had this same conversation last spring, and you know what, it went to court, and they lost.
What's the statute, I think?
The statute is nine dash thirteen dash fourteen point two. Don't have a special election, guys, just, if you don't, if you don't trust me and you don't believe that I can do the job without somebody being in my ear, or Kathy, or whatever. Just don't do it, don't mess with that, number one, you're, you're increasing her workload, she does not need that at all right now. Number two, it's for such a short period of time, the, the return is not great. So, I'm, I have not been very passionate about a very many things since I've been attending meetings for almost three years. But I'm saying, please, just don't do the special election, fight things out between the four of you for the next six months, and then we will have the regular ones. There it is.
All right, thank you, uh, Joan?
I was just gonna, I'll make the part that wants the notice of vacancy comes out, so maybe maybe more than just. Two, or maybe neither of them, two, you don't even know it.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not a need to ask them, are you going to file a petition?
Agreed.
Yeah, right.
The world Supreme Defense Notice, and whether it wants to, you could have four people file petitions.
Okay.
But if you don't need to have the election, or if it's not legal, please don't do it.
Yeah.
So, uh, Shelley, did you have a point?
Did you not say that if you have a special election, it would be, um, till the end for twenty twenty-seven?
Yeah, so it's not four months, it's, yeah.
Not six months, it's another year.
Yeah, six.
Yeah.
All right, this is where that kick goes to for the, um, requirement by ordinance, and I actually saw this, and Scott, that's kinda how I interpreted it. The governing body of, I mean, municipality may by ordinance enacted prior to the vacancy, require that any vacancy on the governing body or in the office of the mayor is to be filled by a special election. Called for that purpose to be conducted as a prior in nine dash thirteen dash fourteen, how I'm reading that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that. In order to have to where every seat is required. To be filled by special election, it would have to be an ordinance.
So, if you wanna collect on the previous, you'll see that there's the statute for that.
Yeah, the point one.
Yeah, and so, um.
Yeah.
No, 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 uh, Aaron, you can, well, it, it's fourteen point one, should you add it, but you can also, also, that will previous and next on the, that's what I'm saying, you can just. It's, it's handy, yeah, so, anyway, but to harmonize these two statutes and make them make sense for each other, cause this one says, hey, the board can do this, right? So if you say, in this first statute, well, the board can do this, and then the second statute, well, you can't do it unless you did some ordinance, that doesn't harmonize, because it gives one stand, it gives you the authority, and I'm saying. So I, I agree with the way you're interpreting that, is the way that that second statute is talking about, is talking about if you, if the board decides, we don't ever wanna go through this again. We never wanna have this dispute about, you know, should we appoint this person, or have this deadlock, so we're gonna require any future vacancies, you know, of any kind. In this town going forward, henceforth, we're gonna require a special election, that's what, that's, that's what that's saying.
Automatic trigger to avoid this.
Yes, you have, so then, that's, that's just the way it has to be, and then that, that option to appoint is taken away if you take this. Okay, but, but yeah, I still think you have the, the ability to, based on the prior ones, to call upon special election, yes.
Yeah.
So, uh, which one, what's the prior ordinance that we're talking about here?
Just, you, you could have, in the, of course, I don't know, I need to get all the prior ordinances from Terry at some point, but. You could have in the past, you know, a board could have passed a, a rule saying, hey, we're going to require any vacancies that ever occur on the board to be filled by special election, we're not gonna appoint anybody. And, and that's where you deal with that, you know, fourteen point two. Um, or, and you, you sort of leave the. Um, or, and you sort of leave the option over. Some fourteen point one.
Great.
Yeah, because fourteen point one essentially grants the authority, really, right? And then fourteen point two should be looked at as a clarification tool. One more question, Scott, just curiosity. Now, if we were to schedule it tonight, what would be the process of canceling it?
I don't really answer a question.
There even would be one.
Yeah, yeah, dig around a little bit to figure that out.
How, oh, I mean, what, how could you even cast?
Why would you want to?
Why would you want to cancel it?
Yeah, I guess, let's worry about the problems we do have.
Yeah. Uh, so I'm just looking up to see if we do have an ordinance about this already. So if you, uh, bear with me, please.
Yeah, there could be, I I don't know.
Yeah, at which point, if we do, then this motion is moot, right? Because that's what that's saying. If you have an ordinance prior to the vacancy that requires a special election be filled, you know, and I know that in the past we have appointed, but, you know, I I have realized that passports have not always uh, done what was in the ordinances too. So, and I think just mainly out of.
It's worth a check for sure, yeah.
Well, the other alternative is we run with four, four members until the the next election.
We can't.
Until January.
January is gonna. Yeah, January will force an election.
And then it's. Yeah, it's not, it wouldn't not be good to wait that long.
So I guess.
What would the voting day be?
If January twenty seventh.
Twenty sixth, okay.
Are you looking it up too, Terry? Oh, see, there's. There's no, there's nothing, there's no, uh, there's also the text special election in there. And I looked for election too, and I didn't see it under there either. So. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, um, scheduling a special election for January twenty seventh. Do we have any further discussion on that?
Sorry, just. Did everybody accept us otherwise? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, nothing.
Yeah, I mean, really, the question is the special election question. Is that what was, uh, delineated in the S D C L?
Yeah.
So do we have any further discussion on this one? Okay, um, so I guess we'll go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I'll have to vote aye too. I mean, we're either gonna do it an hour later, right? So just get it done, done with now. So, um, all opposed? Both, do you abstain or?
I don't know, yeah, like you said, I have to be an aye because it's gonna happen anyway.
Oh, you don't have to, you can go abstain if you want.
What difference does it make? It's already passed. I mean, it, there's.
For the record, I need a vote.
Aye, aye, because I have to, because it's gonna happen anyway. Disappointed, but aye.
Okay.
I think we all are disappointed, but. This way the citizens, they would decide.
Yeah, I mean, we either had to do it now or later, and then we run, having to have it past the deadline of of ninety days before the general, so.
Mm hmm.
Before the next election rather, so. Anyways, all right, well, I guess we're on to item fourteen C. We say the motion from ten twenty one meeting regarding donation to the Haha Santa's Village, and then approve the new motion for donation to Haha Santa's Village. So these are closely linked together. Um, is there?
Minutes in there showing that.
Why are we rescinding it? What's the problem with it? That we are rescinding it?
White paper in there that was provided to me that explains if they were wanting it to be more.
Yeah. So the, so the new motion, I'll, we'll just have a quick discussion on both of them at once, I think, because they're so closely intertwined. The new motion, um, makes, it increases it to a thousand. Our last motion was five hundred, but it also ties the funds to be used for prizes um, for the Christmas decorations contest.
Well, that's the second.
Oh, that is.
Yeah.
Oh.
So.
What's one?
Fourteen C.
I don't think that one's in there then.
Yeah, so.
So basically, they.
Hi, everybody.
Good night. It is late.
That was a motion that was made that they're asking to rescind it.
Right.
And then this was a point of paper.
So, but it's calling, uh, okay, so purchase of small gifts or or prizes, so.
That's different than the.
Our last one didn't have any, um, any strings attached to it, right? It was just like a five hundred dollars donation. So there's a couple of differences there. The the amount and also what it's earmarked for. And, um, do we have the sample motion in this paper? So what do you all, what do you all think about this?
Well, I guess like, what, okay, so how much are we giving to the Haha for their Santa Village?
Right now, we're at five hundred for the last time we voted on it. And there's no strings attached. And this is a policy paper that Jerry submitted that would, um, increase that to a thousand and then, I guess, add the strings of purchase of small gifts or prizes associated with the Santa's Village Carnival.
The motion is, I see a motion here is on, uh.
That's fourteen, that's the next, that's one.
Oh, so there's no.
Yeah.
That's anything motion?
Uh, Linda, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if we need to put in there, um, that it needs to be used for a certain item, which is the gifts, I would think that's fine, but I I would like to, my own self, I think that five hundred is a good amount.
Okay.
I mean, for the Haha, yeah, where this is the one thing.
Yeah.
So I don't know if rescinding it would be necessary. I would think that amending it would work.
Or new motion to add.
Or, yeah.
I mean, I don't know that we necessarily have to add any strings to, as, I mean, I'm just going by the conclusion of the paper. They recommend to, uh, use it for the purchase of small gifts or prizes. I don't know that there's really anything else you guys would possibly do with it anyways, but I don't, as far as my opinion goes, I don't mind donating it to an organization and then trusting that by virtue of the fact I donated it to them, then I trust that they're gonna use it for a a right purpose, not have to specify what that purpose is. Uh, Shelley, did you have a comment?
I can give you the receipts of what I had sent already. It is over two thousand dollars.
Right.
And I didn't see in another page where you are giving a thousand dollars for the lighting contest.
That hasn't been voted on.
I.
It's just, I am on the.
Kind of the same, what's good for one is good for the other.
I would agree with you on that, absolutely. Um, I will say this, as long as, uh, Shelley brought it up, I don't believe that the funding for the Christmas light contest fits into the B B and B funds because the the dollar amount given to a prize winner has nothing to do with how many people show up. So I think that can't happen.
So interesting.
So I would still, um, like to, um, just make a new motion stating that it has to be used for the gifts or whatever, and keep the amount the same.
So we're, I, yeah, I second the motion with, that we don't, are donating five hundred to the Haha for their Christmas gifts for the children.
We're so.
You made that motion.
Well, that's where I'm getting at. So we, we all, so are you saying an additional five hundred then, Donna? Is that what your motion is? Or you agree with the?
I agree with Linda that we could keep it at five hundred.
Okay, and and Linda's motion was that we keep it at the five hundred, but then we add the strings for the gifts and whatever? So are you okay with that?
Yeah, so it's.
Okay.
And and I would trust them to, uh, for this reason and this reason only. And that is because if they screw this one up, they won't get any more fun. So I don't expect them to screw it up. Uh, but I, but just to tie it up in a pretty little bow or not, um, just say it is good.
Okay, so, um, let's go ahead and the, uh, rescind the motion from twenty twenty one, um.
Which is the original motion.
Yeah, right, but it's an item on the agenda, so we need to, to just, we need to vote to clear that off.
You, you tell me what to do.
You, you took official action, so you need to rescind the official action subsidy. That's your, that's the board's goal.
Okay, so, um, Aaron.
I'm kind of thinking, seems kind of weird to rescind a motion related to funds we've already distributed.
Yeah.
I haven't.
Oh, we haven't distributed anything yet?
I mean, it, so just to clarify here, the the recension for the motion was for proposed recension is for a motion for five hundred dollars to Haha. And then they want to make a new motion for five hundred dollars to Haha with the, I guess, the additional strings. And so, um.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, well, let's then let's.
Should it be in one? Or should it be in two?
I think you can do it in one.
Thank you.
So you want to do one motion to both rescind the previous motion and then make a new motion to do the five hundred for the the gifts and what what's listed in the paper.
With the sustainability.
Yeah. Just need to clarify here.
There's nothing in the packet.
None, none of the. Okay.
So you are Santa's Village Gifts?
Mm hmm.
That's fourteen D in the packet. Okay, Joe?
I don't see the point of making a new motion and rescinding one, only to put strings on it that you didn't feel were needed anyway. But secondly, I do, uh, mention the fact that even though they are asking for my money, what you need to remember is that in Santa's Village coincides with a vendor fee. A vendor for always brings people to her, and also, and it is within the town limits, so there will be tax revenue coming from it.
Okay, so let's, let's do a quick item of, um, administration here, so. Linda, you made the motion to both rescind and approve. And then Donna, you seconded that one.
Yeah, but I have a question. Is, are you asking for more money, money, Shelley?
Yes.
Um, or just because of what's in there.
It happened for the. For the lighting.
Yeah, but if they get half, then you feel that you should have more, is that?
Right.
Okay. But I don't, I mean, we haven't voted on the others, so.
It can't happen anyways.
So it does not, it isn't of the funds.
Okay, um, so we have any further discussion on this one? Yeah, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, so I'm gonna abstain from this one, so three eyes, I want abstention. Motion carries. Um, and then item E approves, approve use of B B B money to fund prizes, so to Linda's point that that is, um, likely in a legitimate use of B B B money. Is that your take on it as well, Mr. James?
I'm sorry, Mr. Scher, I didn't.
Okay, no worries. Uh, so Linda's point to that we cannot use B B B money to fund prizes for the annual Christmas, Christmas lighting contest. Is that, is the prizes for the Christmas lighting contest fall under the approved uses of the B B B money?
Yeah, I know much about the terms, I don't, I've never looked at that.
Well, um, well, essentially, it's, it's a fund set up to help spur economic growth. You take, what is it, uh?
Extra penny.
Extra penny. So anyways, um, I mean, does the, is the board?
It says, for the promotion and advertising of the municipality, its attractions and its activities. But I I I won't argue the fact that the Christmas lights bring in people, but the prize money does not.
Right.
Giving out the prize, the people are not gonna be here when we're judging. Mm hmm. When, they they don't care. Mm hmm. They may have their own idea who they thinks was the best, but but I don't see how the money ties to that.
Yeah.
Okay, Aaron.
Uh, yeah, I I'm completely with Linda on that, and, but I think, I mean, we still got a little bit of money. At some point, we're gonna be told that we need to spend on the Christmas lights.
That's different.
Right, and that is different, that is directly capital, using town property.
Using town property, using these B B and B funds to get those lights on the poles so that the public can come and look at them.
Yeah.
That is, to me, um, it's for the promotion and the advertising of the municipality. Now, when we're having our entire, all of our Christmas functions, those lights help with the the look, the, how the town looks, bringing people in. They come here, basically, they come here for the Hallsworths lights. And and, I mean, how many times do I go by there? Every other night, you know, I I love them. But I lo- I love everybody's lights. I already commented on on Mark's tree that's in his window already. It's beautiful. Um, yes, yes. It's there, it is.
So, so should we, so we just do a a motion to, uh, deny?
I would make that motion.
And I will second that one.
Donna seconds. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for, uh, motion carries. So, um, now we're on to new business. First reading of the ordinance seventy three traffic schedules. Um, so the ones in the packet, we have the current ones. And we have some proposed, but Mr. James has updated the proposed one, and that one did not make it in the packet yet. And so I guess, before we do the first reading, so I talked to, uh, the marshal, and he had, he thinks that we should do the fifty mile per hour speed limit in our town limits on Highway seventy nine. Um, the, the other one that we can do is the one that is currently on Fi- Highway seventy nine through the town limits, which is fifty five. And so, um, just.
That's speeding anyway.
Yeah, real quick, the the purpose of this is to update the ordinance such that, um, it's valid for the, I guess what you could say, the current use of seventy nine. So if you read through the through the, what the ordinance ordinance is currently, it says anybody going in excess of twenty five miles an hour on Highway seventy nine is basically, um, against our ordinances, you know, but if if we were to, if we were to act upon that, I doubt that would hold up anywhere, right? Because it's, I mean, we have a D O T sign out there that says fifty five, and I I see your guys' hands. I'm just kind of introducing the topic to everybody, but apparently the marshal had talked to, um, I think it's one of the sergeants up in Custer County, and in their opinion that if we do have valid ordinances, then we can um, administer our own traffic infractions based on speed because it's in our ordinances. And so the idea with this being that if we update our ordinances to be valid for the current time, then we can have the marshal act upon those and and, uh, dole out tickets on seventy nine within Hermosa Town Limits. So that's the idea here, and this is what this, uh, ordinance proposition, it aims to do, um, I. Um, I think that uh we should do do some closer looking at things in the meantime, but I really like this idea, I know ever since I've been on the board, it's been, we can't do anything about it because of this, that, and the other thing, you know, the state highway or, you know, we have a state highway running through the middle of town too, and I've been told that we can't do anything, but but now we may have the opportunity to do something about it, and and if we can, I think we should. And so um with that, um Mister, I'll just ask Mister James, have you have you heard anything on this, or do you have an opinion on this?
Yeah, a couple of things, um. So I had a conversation with Debbie at the uh courthouse in Custer, uh who's, if you've ever met Debbie, she's a very particular person.
Yep.
Who uh left to let you know, you know, the way things should be done. And um she was curious about her new mar- marshal, and she was like, well, you know, why didn't he not send me tickets, this kind of thing? So I was like, what, it's because, so I kind of investigated the process a little bit. And so I did talk to the town marshal about, well, you know, if it's if it's an ordinance we're enforcing, it still goes to the clerk's office in Custer, and then they put it on the docket there. If it's a state law he's citing, then it it still goes to the clerk's office, and then it'll be the state's attorney that prosecutes it. But if it's if it's an ordinance, they're gonna send me to, right, so just so you know, it'll it'll be uh it's like, but u- usually, I'm I'm usually host Custer dockets anyways, it's not a really big deal for me to be in another. You know, but but if you want to fight their speeding ticket, and sometimes people get worked up about them, you know, they'll they'll want to fight you about it, so sometimes you might have to have a little traffic trial here and there, you know, that it's gonna be on that docket. When I uh looked at, you know, I was given this to look at her a couple days ago. Um, and yeah, I don't, I I think that updating it to fifty-five is is a great idea, because again, it it looks absurd on its face when you you then you have a posted speed. Add odd with it, so I think that it's good to update that. I just simply looked at some of the other languages, looked like this was pretty old, it says it was the last time it was looked at was like nineteen seventy-four. So some of the language, I just felt a little weird um at the top about the emergency emergency personnel. Um, because the way it was reading now, it says like, except law enforcement officers, ambulance and fire equipment, drivers. And I get what they're trying to do, uh you know, which you you don't want to subject those folks to those limits necessarily, if they're doing their job, working on an emergency, but the language is still a little sloppy, so so it's me, um because if you read it that way, then if it doesn't accept law enforcement officers, couldn't bother off duty. But whatever, right, it doesn't say that, I mean, so could mean that you get ambulance and fire equipment, as well as like you've got other vehicles, sometimes you got search and rescue vehicles, those kind of things that, you know, maybe they're coming through with a sirens or whatever. So I just wanted to say, you know, basically, if you're a law enforcement on duty, and I didn't put that in the emergency vehicle category, because maybe they're rushing somewhere, personal vehicle or whatever. Uh, or emergency personnel while operating emergency vehicle, I thought that that language just was better than what was in the old statute. But other than that, again, I think fifty-five makes sense, and I think that your um marshal is, I I mean, I don't think he's a a lot of towns, I mean, I back when I used to live in eastern Kansas, I mean, there were there were a couple little municipalities there, right, in the intersection of the interstates, that like, they just rode as many tickets as they possibly could write. Everybody who came through, they were just like little money mills, they would treat their courts as, you know, whatever, their city courts, and it was just, everybody just kind of knew about it. Uh, I think one town called Edwards, where actually you had to get charged by the feds, the feds like arrested people for misusing it. Um, but anyway, um I think in in your marshal, I believe, just wants to be able to sort of respond to the public, you know, demand that hey this be sort of watched without trying to make it a revenue, you know, generating thing. And I think that this change helps him to do that.
Okay, and that's some new information that I hadn't heard before on the precise mechanics of how that works, so thank you for that. Um, I saw Linda's hand and Donna, and I think Erin had your hand up, so let's go with these three and then go to the audience.
So I spoke with Bruce, the head of the region's DOT. Called him and told him that we were looking at changing that speed limit and moving the the flashing signs down to the property lines of Hermosa. And he he didn't seem to have a problem with it, but he did state that because it's a change, it has to go through traffic, this department and that department, and it will take some time. And that they will um a letter to support what we want and why we want it would be very helpful. And so I I have already talked to Cal and and Terry about this, and and uh I uh we had talked about fifty rather than fifty-five. And he didn't seem to have a problem with that either, and I think that would be wonderful myself. Um, it it doesn't matter, kind of, because people are gonna drive sixty and seventy if they want to anyway. However, the people that abide by the law will abide by the law. And that gives it that much more strength that there would be less accidents with more people going at a slower speed and for a longer time. I I told him that it had a lot to do with, I mean, our town has already grown, you know? How many businesses now do we have off of Hi- Highway seventy-nine before we're up at the top of the hill, you know? And we have a housing development over there, and we're getting houses built on this side now, where um Preston sold some of their land. And I told him, I said, I I I think it's, there's more people here, there's more kids here in the sixteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen year old categories that don't have as much experience. And they're driving, you bet they are, and I said, I just, we just think it would be a good thing to drop it down to fifty, but like you said, it would take some time, but.
So and to that point, this this one is for fifty-five, so it's probably prudent to do it to make the ordinance match what it is now, and then if we can change it to fifty, if we so choose later, then we can update it to that.
Takes after a year, you can't update it for a year.
The ordinance?
Right.
Can't update it on ordinance after be uh before a year.
One year, if we sign this one, we can't change it. And so I guess I would, I would like to see it changed to the fifty. And um I strictly say, send it to the state and say, we have not passed this yet, because right now we have this one passed, it's twenty-five. And I would think that might give us a little better bump to get the fifty, because they don't want the twenty-five, right? I mean, I I I think it's a good idea, I think wait to pass the ordinance um until we hear from the DOT, that would be my.
Okay, uh Donna.
Well, I I was just gonna say, I'm sure we have to contact DOT, but we can do it. Because I mean, it's not, I mean, they still have jurisdiction over that highway.
Right. Uh, Eric.
Uh, so a couple things is I talked around a little bit after uh some things were going on. Um, it may be, and I would, this is probably more of a Scott question, it may be so that things like this shouldn't be done without an actual study, especially in a situation like a state highway, as far as changing the limit.
They will do that.
But beyond that, um I don't necessarily see why we should have a number in this ordinance at all, and simply state shall not exceed the posted speed limit.
Right.
That's because if we go that route, we never have to think about the number again, whether the state changes or not, whether we put a light in there and cut it down to forty-five, it wouldn't matter anymore.
Good thought.
And there's another weird one that I just wanted to point out while we're on the topic. Um, I mentioned this, the Scott, speed limit on all streets within the town load shall be fifteen miles per hour at all times unless otherwise designated. Um, and I did talk to Scott about a little bit about this, but there's a statute that very, very specifically states unmarked roads within municipalities are twenty-five miles an hour. It states that specifically, so I'm not sure if we're in a conflict there, but um.
Again, we we're pretty set a different one, that.
Right, but.
We have the powers to do that under the traffic code, but but yeah, it's it, that's a sort of, that's for, you know, unmarked, unposted zones.
Well, for that, we could do like at every entrance to town, essentially, welcome to Hermosa. If other, if not otherwise posted, this town is fifteen miles per hour. And that would cover us there, because that's, it has to be posted in some fashion, but I think we should get away with putting any numbers in ordinances that could ever possibly have to be changed again.
Joan, and then Dan.
Um, I think that's a great idea to uh put it in there now, to exceed the posted street number, it solves a lot of problems. And since this is currently a first reading, if you continue with the first reading, you have the ability to make changes like that before the second reading.
Right, because it's tiny, right, tiny change.
Yeah, and this is a small change, I mean, however, my other, I could have a second question. That would be taking care of out here, and that is, my understanding is that so you can collect money for the tickets?
That was not my.
No, is that why we're changing this of the ordinance?
No, we're changing it because the ordinance now says twenty-five.
But does this mean that we will be able to collect some of the money for speeding tickets within this section, does it count? Providing we get this service, doesn't it?
Right.
Okay, so if if that's the case, why are we not doing this one at the same time, so we get them? I mean, how many stuff more people right here than anywhere? And we don't get a penny for that.
So i- if we wanted to update it to include uh Highway forty, then um would we just put?
I I I can suggest into the circle, so I I think um so after the words motorcycle or other vehicle at a speed cross out the words exceeding fifty-five miles per hour, and insert the words greater than the posted speed limit. And then, and I think you just strike um strike, you can, you could strike on South Dakota Highway, say Highway seventy-nine also. If you chose, and then you just.
State or county highways.
In the uh speed zone marked in town at all.
On a highway, on a s- state highway?
No, I would say. Right, strike through on South Dakota State Highway seventy-nine. Then you gotta basically just do the corporate limits of town.
Okay, well, then that covers this one here too, that he was, that he was questioning, right?
Well, I think that's that's if it's in the unwarranted.
But I think his point was that we can't do that anymore, because it has to be marked in some way, with or running afoul of state law.
Well, I'm not sure, but I was just, the scouts comfortable with us doing that, and it's still enforceable, I was just curious, because the statute says unmarked twenty-five, so if somebody like, could a really good defense attorney say, oh, well, there's a state stat- statute that says twenty-five?
No, because because the traffic code says you have the power to set limits within town limits. And you can, they can be greater or lesser than whatever, I mean, you you can, you can make them more restrictive than the state, right, to choose. So um to that, that would still work.
Okay, Dan, did you have a comment?
So if you're gonna be working with D O T on the speed limit, can you take that sixty-five mile and say halfway to the bridge? Instead of break before you get to forty, sometimes that's a bitch to get out of there.
Yeah, right, that, I mean, Linda's been talking with DOT, is that something that you could talk to them about too, Linda?
Moving that speed to sixty-five before you get to higher forty, halfway between flying day and night.
Right, yeah.
If they could move that border from our half mile south.
Right. Oh, yeah, I I know, it's terrible.
As a resident of being up the hill, I wouldn't mind also to push that sign a little.
Oh, a little further too.
Over that hill, sometimes I'm trying to get up here before you go to that neighborhood, it's pretty bad.
I'll tell you what would help us, in in this instant, what would help would be a a quick little note or letter from you stating the problems that you've had at this street and you also, and then we have public documentation to go along with our request to the to the DOT. Call him for us, we just, we we need as many notes as possible.
Really, city limits, we could have this sign.
Right, it should be down there, and then.
Well, we could, I mean, they could, we can push the fifty-five, or we, DOT could push the fifty-five mile an hour zone all the way back toward, you know, on the other side of BJ's even, and then.
Town limits.
Well, they they can only do town limits, they can do anywhere on the highway, we can only collect on town limits, but if we're wanting to.
But they will.
If we wanted to have a speed zone due to safety, really, it should be on the other side itself, it's thirty-six at least. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But it, the the city limits actually goes out past uh Patch, no. Yeah, needs to be, yeah, before that, yeah.
So, but I mean, obviously, we're talking about enforcing speed within town limits, but the DOT can set that limit wherever they want. And we can just kind of be within that.
Yeah, that's where it is now.
Yeah.
But the the.
With the annexation, we can pump it out, we could ask to get it pumped out the.
Right, right now, right now, the speed limit sign, or the Hermosa sign, I should say, is like right about there. And I actually asked them to put it out at the beginning, and I don't know why they didn't, but they put it right about where that little mark is, right there. So if we could change it, the speed limit passed where the Gumbel Lilla, or you turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so um right now, so we're we're supposed to be reading in ordinance here, so we made some changes right now on the fly. Do we need to have a motion to accept those changes since they weren't in the packet?
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading.
Then you have to have the second reading, you get any changes, and then you.
It's not a resolution, it's an ordinance.
Well, I was just making sure, we, since these changes weren't in the packet, you know, do we need to have a?
So we're gonna change that chapter seventy-three, is that, so it's no, nothing, I think no, nothing? So can you change it anytime we want to?
No, we need to, we will approve it now.
No, we just had the first reading.
All right, let's do it. Seventy-three, traffic schedules, schedule. Uh, I, or one, remuneral I. Speed limits, schedule one, speed limits, A, it shall be unlawful for any person or persons except law enforcement officers while on duty or emergency services personnel while operating an emergency vehicle to drive or operate any automobile, truck, motorcycle, or other vehicle at a speed greater than the posted speed limit through the corporate limits of the town within a zone marked by highway speed signs. And B, upon conviction of a violation of Division A above, the person shall be punished by a fa- fine in an amount set by the Board of Trustees as per the current fee schedule, or by imprisonment for a period not exceeding thirty days, or by both a fine and imprisonment. So that was the first reading. So that's very interesting, so let's move on to approved use request BBB money to fund hanging of delightful Christmas decorations. So uh Linda alluded to this earlier with the other discussion we had on uh Christmas lights and BBB money.
Do we know what we ha- what they have for lights, and are these lights for people?
Then I don't, I have not looked into them yet, I don't, I can't honestly answer that question. That will have to be checked out, I think that uh um we need to have a couple people over there taking an inventory, taking pictures, and checking to see if they were.
Well, me and Cal did the initial inventory.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we received them and put them in the. Yeah, twenty-seven, um. We didn't test them or anything, that's probably.
Well, if we need more information, then we should probably uh push this off till we have the information, or do we have time to do that?
These, they need to be put up before the thirteenth. And it would really be nice if they were up before the sixth, before AHA's deal too. Whereas that's during the day, isn't it? How late does that go?
They got up like the weekend of Thanksgiving or something.
Rapid order. Okay. I mean, it would really be nice, but, uh, you know.
An amount not to exceed?
Well, I would have not a clue what, how much time it would take to put one up. I wouldn't want to even guess.
The agenda item is to approve a request to use the money, but it sounds like we don't even have a dollar amount figured out yet. So how are we going to do that without having a dollar amount? Or we need to figure out what that dollar amount would be?
I never thought about the money, to be honest. I just knew that.
Let's, uh, table it till the, uh, special meeting on Tuesday then.
Okay.
And then, uh, that's a good idea from Terry. So, um, I don't know, do we have to have a motion for that? I don't know if we do. Uh, so let's go ahead and do that. So now we're on to items from constituents. Uh, is it, anybody have any comments out there? Probably time to go home, right?
I know.
Uh, I think, so for trustee input, uh, we have this video for the, um, the Lagoon project that was put together by Baroque. And the day that they were here, Rob gave me this video on a USB and for whatever reason, it didn't wanna play on this computer. Otherwise we would've watched it then, so. Tested it out before the meeting and it worked then, so cross your fingers. Let's watch that and then I guess we can, uh, I don't know that we need an executive session after that.
Play loud.
Uh, what?
Yeah, what? Donna, Donna, flip the switch behind you. Thank you. Who took this video?
Somebody was. Young, young guy on the field has a good job.
Smarted out.
And I almost looked like toys. Boy, he's driving fast.
I just keep thinking how boring that looks, you know? All day long.
I bet you.
Absolutely, yeah. You can link on the, embed on the website too.
They have also done, uh, another one that's called the room. And it's a virtual room. And you can, different areas of the room that you put it on tells you different things about, um, not this particular project, because it's almost done or is done, but the third ground. And, uh, it gives a timeline and a lot of different things. It's, it's a very well-done deal.
Oh, okay.
I don't have a copy of it. I have a link to it and I am told them that with the change, they will send either keep the link live or send us some memory stuff with it or something.
Can you, can you send me the link?
Especially done to use when we, yeah, hopefully have to do that. Um, to use during uh, first community meeting on this project, which will be after the new year. Now sometime I'm sure I'm too busy this summer. But yeah, well, definitely anyone who wants to, I'll be happy to send it.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, it also, as the progress moves forward, if we have have the technology to do it, can be updated as the project moves, as you reach a timeline, you know? So that's kind of, kind of cool.
Yeah, I'll have to check that out. All right, um, I guess we can forego the rest of the trustee input in, uh, lieu of, uh, exiting the meeting, so. Unless you guys wanna do an executive session for another three hours.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting at ten sixteen?
The most motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Second, so, any discussion? Yeah, and all those in favor? Aye, motion carries.